All right. So we'll come to order. A state board meeting here at JP. And let's start off by doing a roll call. And I'm Kristi Huling, Chair of State Board from Jeffersonville. Rainbow Chen, former student representative now, do I, or?
On your way up, yeah.
Honorary student representative.
We're the only student here today.
Right. When are you speaking?
They haven't appointed a replacement yet.
Oh, they haven't, okay.
Not yet.
John Carroll-Norris.
Peter Pelz-Woodbury.
Mark Perrin-Middlebury.
Rebecca Holcomb, Agency of Education.
Phil Mathis-Gosian.
Stacy Weinberger-Burlington.
John O'Keefe, Manchester.
And as I said earlier, Bonnie will be joining us. She has something come up. It's actually the last day of school in Burlington. So something came up for the district that they needed her. And then Connor, our other student rep, is in Spain. So enjoying that. Seeing our audience is very large. Do we have any public to be heard? Yes?
Any what?
Public to be heard?
Agency.
No?
No, I'm the agency.
Okay, so you started coming forward and I was like, oh, that's good. So I guess there's no public to be heard. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. Yes?
Just a point of privilege. Are these working? It's a little hard to hear people on the other side of the room.
Are these working?
They are.
Yeah.
So you're picking up, but I think it's the air system.
Yeah.
So people will have to speak loudly and clearly.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
And just let us know if you... Okay, so right now with the consent agenda, do I hear any mo... Yeah?
Yes, move the motion.
Move the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Any discussion on any, I am on the consent agenda. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, so the consent agenda has passed. Moving on to board announcements. Again, Bonnie is going to be joining us later and she was going to talk to us about the study group that's meeting, about independent schools. So I know Rebecca, you were there, so maybe in your chair's report, would you mind just letting us know about that meeting? Or in your secretary's report? Any other board announcements? Bill?
Just simply was on the monthly telephone call of the Government Affairs Committee of NASB. And the one thing that was interesting besides the federal president's budget proposal was the ESSA plans that other states were having. And the interesting thing to me was that there's a lot of variety there that I wasn't really expecting, but I was glad to see. And I'm sure we'll talk about this more as the agenda develops.
Can you, the other states, other states' response to ESSA? Is that what you're saying, how it varies?
Yeah. What was kind of interesting was the alternative measures that people were using.
Uh-huh.
Dealing with civics involvement and things of that sort.
Okay.
And I thought that was kind of interesting. And they're getting a little bit away from just strictly test-based stuff, which I think is a good thing. And we'll see how it plays out. I mean, the state agencies are going through, their plans being reviewed by the feds. I don't know where our status is at this point in time, but I'm sure we'll be talking about it. Have you been called to...
Well, I was going to update a little bit on my report, but we, I can tell you where we think we are. And Amy's planning to talk about that too tomorrow.
Yes.
Do you want me to comment on that now?
Um, we have quite a bit of time in the agenda tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
Would that be part of strategic plan discussion, or...
No, so Amy's going to be updating us about ESSA and the plan. Yeah, so it's already built into the schedule. Other board announcements? Okay, seeing none. I can just go quickly, chair's report. The LCAR hearing for our rules around Act 46, Alternative Structures. It was an interesting LCAR hearing. So we got there and the day of, it was unclear whether the miscellaneous bill had been signed or not. And that made the rules going through, there were some changes that would have to be made because the new miscellaneous bill would actually affect some of our rules. So it actually was not signed that day for LCAR. And so myself and Donna had to then go to the governor's office, confirmed it was signed. And then the secretary, we called Secretary of State's office, and 10 minutes after they adjourned for the LCAR meeting, they gave it an act number. So the miscellaneous bill is now Act 49. So it might cause a little confusion on the agenda because you'll see it as 513, you'll see it as miscellaneous bill, but now it's Act 49. So all three of those things mean the same thing. And so that was signed in. And then there was a subsequent LCAR hearing meeting last week, was it the eighth? And so then it was, our rules were adopted by LCAR. So it was a little bit of a weird kind of process. But I really want to thank Donna. She was absolutely amazing coming through and really, she's like, let's run to the governor's office and find out if it was signed. Let's call the Secretary of State's office. And she just worked so tirelessly to help us get our job done. I know we talk a lot about not having staff, but we do have people working on our behalf tirelessly. And I think Donna really needs our appreciation for that. And she was just going above and beyond to make sure that the rules were going to run through smoothly. And I'll tell her that again when she's here. But just wanted to put that out. I also want to remind people, we have two amazing people retiring in the state, Bill Talbot and Ken Page. They're not here, but Bill Talbot, who's been at the agency now and is, I don't know what the state of Vermont is going to do without his expertise in finance, and his expertise will be missed. And also Ken Page with the Vermont Principals Association. And you all got a letter forwarded from Ken Page.
And there's a, Bill's being...
Is it a secret?
Yeah, no, it's not. I'm just, I'm actually looking for it on my thing.
It's the 29th.
Yeah, everybody I think got the invitation, yes. It's on the 29th, starting at around 2:00 in the Cedar Creek Room at the State House. And you're all welcome and hoping you'll, some of you will come and help recognize him.
And one of the great things, I know that is being put together, since he's not here, I can say it, is a...
Well, he's on camera.
He's on camera. Is he watching right now?
No.
Probably not. And by the time he sees this, it would pretty, but there is going to be, if you want to write him a nice note, think about that.
Maybe what? We're putting together a book of letters and tributes because he's been in state government and in the state for so long. We're putting together, he's also quite funny, so there's a lot of funny Bill stories.
He was also in the legislature.
Yes. So we're expecting some of them to turn up. But the thought was to put together just a binder with, you know, tributes if people want to share stories.
And then before the meeting, it was, we do not have a student rep. I have contacted the governor's office quite a few times and have not heard back yet. So I'm not sure when our student rep is going to be joining us. But that, right now, we are still without a student rep. So, and thank you, Rainbow, for coming to JP, not only to present, but to represent students and it's a lone student voice here today. So, thank you.
Is Connor, he's the new voting student rep and the new one?
Will be non-voting.
Non-voting.
For a year.
Yep. So the students get a year to kind of get familiarized and to know that and...
I actually have a question.
Yeah.
Do I still vote today?
No.
Is my term...
Wake up.
I spilled coffee all over my...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I was drinking as I was.
Oh, my God!
John?
I read the statute and says that you serve until...
Until you're replaced.
Yeah.
So I...
Are you okay?
Oh, God.
I would think she would vote today.
And considering how Connor isn't here, would that...
Well, that wouldn't have, but I don't think there's anything controversial on the agenda today.
Because I believe Dylan voted last year.
I think he did because we hadn't got a formal replacement.
Right, because we haven't gotten a replacement. So...
So this would bring you, if you voted now, it would bring you to a full term.
Okay.
Yeah.
And she definitely needs to make the motion to adjourn when we get to that point in time.
Got it. Okay. All right.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything anyway that's going to be odd today.
No. All right. So, and that's all I have for right now.
Madam Chair, before you leave your report.
Yep.
Would you update us on the status of the Summer Study Committee? You are a designated member of that committee. Could you tell us what you're going to be representing there?
So at the last meeting, my designee is Bonnie. So that's what I was saying at the beginning of the meeting, that Bonnie was going to do that part of that. So she's my designee going to the meetings. And they had their first meeting. And I guess, as I said, Bonnie won't be here until the afternoon, so she can do an update on that. And that's why I asked Rebecca, because she was actually, she's also at the meeting, not representing the board, but was there, and if she would speak to the meeting itself. And it was just an organizational meeting. And from what I do know from Bonnie, the appointments had not been confirmed yet for the legislator, so they actually did not elect a chair yet. And I do know there's actually a problem getting a quorum for a meeting together. So there's no meeting scheduled for June, and they're still trying to find a July date that works for everybody. So they've only had one meeting. It was more, and Rebecca...
May I just talk to you?
Yeah.
May I just pose a question?
Yes.
So Bonnie will be representing the state board.
She's my designee, yes.
So she'll be representing the state board. Is that correct? So what process do we have established for influencing or guiding her representation? Since she's speaking on our behalf, how will she know what our views are?
Well, is it...
I mean, so maybe, I think we should talk about that. Can I give some context first? Because I think it will help.
Yes.
I think that's something we should discuss, but maybe it helps to have context to know how that conversation should take place. At the first meeting, you're correct. In fact, we still haven't received an appointment from the House. So we have an appointment from the Senate. We don't yet have an appointed member of the House to serve on the committee. We've also been unable to get a date when sufficient numbers of the independent schools can attend. So we're waiting and we're still trying to get dates and serve out to get some dates to do it. And hopefully we'll be able to do that in July to move the meeting forward. At the first meeting, all the committee did was basically review the, some of the same documents that this board has reviewed at various points. In fact, we pulled them from, many of them from the website. So it was just, what is the existing statute that's relevant? What are the existing, you know, pieces of guidance and contribution from the independent schools, but also from the Attorney Generals and from the Human Rights Commission? And just looked at some of those key things as they relate to the obligations of the state, not specifically the board. Moving forward, the members of the independent schools who are represented on that committee asked to have a meeting to present their independent school agenda. And that is going to be the next agenda for the state, for that next meeting of that group. They also asked for some background on special ed and what actually the rights and responsibilities and obligations of the state are and of districts are with respect to special education. So we're hiring and bringing in an attorney who consults with the agency on issues related to special ed law, who will present that information as well. The committee asked Bonnie to present the history of the board's thing. And Bonnie, I believe, spoke to you, but was uncomfortable presenting it because she really felt that the purpose of the committee was to start fresh because the legislature was unhappy with what the state board had done. And so her opinion was that the committee should move forward, start with a clean slate and make some of their own, their own, their own agenda based on their own review of the facts. So her inclination was to not present the state board's opinion or presentation at this point, but to let the committee review the facts, consult with the members, and then come up with a new, they need a fresh start.
When you use the term "clean slate"?
Start, start the conversation over. Not start from the proposed draft of the state board rules as they currently sit.
In other words, start with no draft?
The first was to go through the issues, to go through existing statute, rules, regulations as they relate, and then begin to talk about priorities from there, yeah.
But does that mean that the...
They're not starting with the draft. They have not reviewed the current draft of the proposed rules.
They being?
The Independent Study Committee. That said, we don't have a chair at this point. We can't elect a chair until the, at this point, the House appoints its member. And so my assumption is they'll elect a chair at the next meeting and then the path forward will formalize at that point.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just didn't understand clearly. I thought I understood you to say that Bonnie was saying that it's the view of this board to start with a clean slate.
No. Bonnie was asked if she wanted to present the draft rules as they currently stand. And her question, which I believe she took to Krista, was given that the purpose of the Independent School Legislative Committee was that they had concerns with that draft. She was going to recommend to the committee at the next meeting that they actually begin as a committee to review the existing statute, rules, and regulations that apply, and begin to come up with their own priorities, starting, you know, from that, from that perspective, rather than starting from the existing draft. And so I think she'll be here today and you can discuss that, and certainly that's something we should discuss. But the other thing is that piece of the agenda hasn't been finalized because it's difficult to finalize until that board has a committee, has a chair. So I think that we're sort of in, we're on limbo until we have a chair and until we get, we are able to get people to come to a meeting. And right now, there's not a lot of interest in the meeting.
I guess I have two questions. Who's the Senate appointee?
The Senate appointee is Senator Beruth.
Senator who?
Beruth.
Okay.
Chair. And my guess is it will be somebody from House Ed.
And then, does the administration have a clear position on it yet, do you know?
The position, the administration...
The administration, the governor's office?
Yes. As represented to me, is that their hope is that there'll be some consensus recommendations out of this committee. That's the extent of what they said.
Okay.
Their hope is, again, I'm sorry...
A consensus set of recommendations. And the recommendations will relate to the specific criteria laid out in Act 29, as it's now numbered.
49?
49, sorry. They were asked to come back with criteria related to, I'm going to blow it. Suzanne, do you remember offhand? I mean, the...
Financial reporting.
Yeah, yeah. Transparent, you know, financial accountability, access, and special education. They did not talk about quality, but I think the committee is inclined to also look at some quality, minimum quality standards.
And when they're done formalizing that, then it will be brought to the state board. So they're working on their own recommendations to bring to us for review. And so that's what, hoping for this consensus to come from that.
They make recommendations to the state board or to the legislature?
Both.
In statute, in statute, the statute currently says they will make recommendations to the state board.
Yes. And when is the date of submission?
They can have up to seven meetings by, I think it's November or December. The goal is to have a set of concrete recommendations to the state board prior to the next legislative session. That's what the statute calls for.
Is there, is there a sense from the committee, whether it would be through regulation or through state statute changes? Not clear yet, or...
I think we need to be clear, I'm going to say this again. The committee's met once. All they did was go over current statute, current rules and regs. There's no discussion about where they want to go at this point. It would be premature to say that. They reviewed the charge, what it is they're actually supposed to do with respect to fiscal accountability, access, and special ed. That was about it.
So basically a kickoff meeting?
It was a kickoff meeting. And we've been unable to get to a quorum since then.
And that was, the meeting had to take place by statute by May 30th? And you got it on May 30th. But the bill wasn't signed, and that was a Tuesday on Memorial Day weekend, and it wasn't signed to the Thursday before. So it was a very tight kind of turnaround. And so, and so it, the meeting did happen, the first one. Now we're just waiting for that second. Bill, you had your hand up?
Yes. Actually, it was playing off of what you just said, is that the law does say that they make recommendations to this board. And so in many ways, I would see they are looking at it as being de novo, and they would be making recommendations, and we don't weigh in, much as you had mentioned in the earlier session, is that they need to make their recommendations, and then we as a group would look at what they have to say.
I think, given how challenging that conversation was, I think there's some power in starting de novo, as you said.
I do too. I think start all over.
Repeat that, please.
Starting fresh, clean slate.
Right.
New group.
Any follow-up questions, John?
No, thank you both.
I guess, just the one thing I would add, just the one thing I would add in, you know, I get the sense from the independent schools, and I guess this is, this is some conversations I've had. I hope the committee looks at, I'm not sure, you know, most of the time in legislation or regulation, there's usually some trade-off. And in looking at the old 2200 rules, there really wasn't anything in it for independent schools. So I'm hoping that there's a conversation that takes into account things that independent schools, changes they may be looking at as well.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand your point.
My point is, is...
Maybe I can help you. Like, so I know when I talked to Noel, he talked about there was some confusion even around when schools have, working with multiple LEAs. And so if there isn't a common practice, and then an independent school works with, say, five or six different LEAs, the confusion of that. And so what you're saying is maybe that they'll take some of that into account while looking at the rules and what, to make smoother the transition and the cooperation and working relationship between schools and independent schools.
Yeah, so maybe there's something in the process that independent schools are actually looking for that would strengthen the overall system. And right now, I think the 2200 rules, they see as an all or nothing game. So I'm hoping that there is some conversation about like, like what the chair was saying, that maybe there are some things that independent schools are looking for that might be added to the...
Right.
Process that might make the whole thing more palatable to them.
Right. I think there's no question, there's issues. I mean, one of the things that's been a source of frustration for me is I've been trying to move changes around driver's education in independent schools for two years now, but it's been, we've been unable to even address that issue. And I think there are win-wins. We also know that there's some issues around special education funding in independent schools that we've been unable to even broach that conversation. I think that's unfortunate.
Is it a driver's ed issue?
There's a driver's ed issue too.
Yes. I'm familiar with that on a local level, yes.
And if you have a solution.
And in higher functioning systems, there are very easy workarounds. There are some places that seem unable to find them. So just, it just depends on the functionality of the local relationships.
Okay, John?
Yeah, when I was, I went to the NASB new member workshop in DC last week. And it was interesting and somewhat instructive. I talked with some people there about the relationship between their legislature and their board. And many boards also suffer from the same kind of maybe competition or confusion about where does the board's authority start and stop with relationship to the legislature's authority. Of course, there's no stop in the legislature's authority, it's infinite.
Right.
But the boundaries of the boards are finite and not clear. And it got me thinking that, from a distance, again, arriving on all this long after it happened, it seems to be essentially a turf war here. That the, when, when 25% of the state senate introduces a bill to strip the board of its rulemaking authority, you have to say, somebody's not very happy with this organization, there's some tension between the legislature and this body. There's some tension apparently between the executive and this body since we don't get any money to run our own operations.
Yeah, we've never...
You actually get quite a bit of support from the administration.
Uh-huh. And...
We still have our own dedicated staff.
I understood that.
Which we've never had.
Which is provided by law. I guess my takeaway in DC was that some people are working to clarify the boundary lines between statutory authority and board authority so that these turf wars that I believe we are engaged in are less likely to happen. So I have an interest in bringing to this committee, this study committee, this issue of the general clarity or lack thereof between the authority of the board and the authority of the legislature. And I'm wondering if there's a way to clarify the enabling statute so that it's clearer what is policy. For example, the word "policy" is used frequently, and yet the legislature also makes policy. So which policy is it? It's not clear. It's not at all clear from the reading of the statute. So maybe this is something to talk about in our discussion with Bonnie. But I personally, as a former legislator, have an interest in bringing to this committee's attention more the general concern and not the Rule 2200 concern. So that we might avoid these turf wars in the future.
And I think, I don't see it as a turf war, but I do agree that there is the boundaries, and what are those boundaries? And the legislature, like you said, gets to set the boundaries. And I think they're resetting those boundaries. And that's what the attempt was this last legislative session, and that's their prerogative. So we're looking forward to working with them in this, through this process. And I do think we are going to get some more clarity around what they want our roles around independent schools. And I think that will come out of this, this committee. And so I think that this committee will help set some of those boundaries. I think it's always a dance and a relationship because we are an independent board, but there's the legislature that's making policy, and then there's the governor making policy. So it's a, it's a fine dance, and how do we navigate that? And I still think as a board, we're trying to figure that out under our new system, where the board, when I joined, was just at the tail end when we still directed the secretary. We don't direct the secretary in the agency anymore. So I think there is still some of that learning curve that's going on. And some of those, I don't know if I call it turf war or growing pains. Something maybe just a little different, yeah.
I was, I was going to say, I think a lot of it's growing pains because I think, I think that what the board is experiencing is a transition as well, because your role in statute has changed, and we're seeing what that now means. But I also think in this case, the particular statute governing approval of independent schools to receive public dollars, the context in which we operate has evolved quite considerably. And so the other benefit, and I think the reason they timed that independent school study committee the way they did, is if the statute needs updating, they will know that going into the next session as well. So even if this is a rulemaking authority of the board, it may also be that certain statutes are outdated and just haven't been looked at. And then that would be an opportunity for them to sort of recalibrate or reset as well. So I think that there's always going to be tension when, you know, changes, you know, maybe move in one arena and not in another. And so my hope is that coming out of this process in December, we'll have some clarity around what sensible policy looks like, and maybe some sense of what has to be done on the statutory side and what should be done on the regulatory side. And I think we don't have that clarity right now. And I think, again, that's part of the reason Bonnie was not inclined to go out and make a case, because she was open to the idea that we need to revisit both, and wanted to make sure that that conversation developed in an open way, really grappling with some of the issues and the tensions, without trying to set the agenda by starting where this conversation in this body had ended up. And I do think that was a, that was a thoughtful way of approaching it.
Stacy?
Yeah, I think, it's interesting, John, I really like what you're saying. I think I just think of it maybe in the flip. I think it would be incredibly helpful to have some clarity on the boundaries or just maybe the way the different checks and balances overlap. But I, I would think it'd be a big mistake for the committee to use 2200 as the vehicles through which to have that discussion, because I think then that's going to change a little bit, who, how we look at how those checks and balances work, if it's all through the lens of the independent school rules. Because I think then there's, there's a lot of, there are a lot of different values there competing for attention versus how do we work together as different governing bodies to make the best educational policy for children? So I think you're absolutely right. It'd be really helpful to have some more clarity about how we work together and when, more clarity about how we work together, and when, when does this policy overrule this policy? But I hope the committee keeps its charge separate from that, because I think their charge is not to determine how the, how the legislature and the state board work together. Does that make sense?
And to be clear, we do have an attorney, I mean, the board requested, if I recall, an attorney general's opinion, which decided that you are within the, the realm of your role as the statute's currently written. If there's a change in statute that somebody feels is necessary, that's a separate issue from what the board's actual authority is, and that could also be the case.
Oh, sorry, Bill.
I would object a little bit to calling it a turf war. I think that mischaracterizes it. There's two separate kinds of roles. In terms of, the state board is appointed to look at the interest of education and what's good for education, seemingly without concern for political repercussions. Politicians by nature are very much concerned with the political thing, so there's different roles and functions that we both have to do. There are times and places where this board would need to tell the legislature, we think you're right, and there are times in which we should say, no, legislature, we think you're wrong. Because we are an independent body to serve in, in that kind of capacity. But I think we have tomorrow morning, we're going to be looking at roles and statutory obligations of the state board, and then at the strategic plan, and both of those will give us an opportunity to develop this a little bit more.
Well, I just wanted to, you know, maybe we're getting into, well, I call it Political Science 101, but it's a little bit beyond that. I guess there's a couple of things that we need to look at. One is, I, I agree with Bill that, you know, we're an appointed board that's supposed to be apolitical, but we are the creature of a political system. We're created by state law. And I think John and I were talking on the way out, probably better part of 100 year, I don't know how long the state board has been in effect, but it's
There's been various versions since about 1840.
Okay, so even, even longer than we suspected. You know, as far as like legislation and regulation, though, you know, regulation is typically put in place, you know, you have legislation which is typically much shorter, and sort of either grants powers or creates different programs, and then regulation is put in place to offer further clarity. So my concern would be anytime that we go far enough to either create new law through regulation, or it conflicts with current laws. But, so I, I mean, I usually view, you know, legislature might put the DMV in charge of issuing driver's licenses. They're not going to go into detail of how it's done, then the DMV puts in place regulations that talks about, has anyone gotten their license lately? Yeah, it's quite a process now. It's, it's almost impossible to get it right the first time. But that's all done through regulation. So I guess that's, you know, I would just want to make sure that we're, that we're keeping our eye on that, that, that we are an independent, I guess we call it independent, but we are a, a board, but at the same time, we operate under the larger picture, and that our regulations should, I think, back up what's on the books. Now, the books might not be very clear, the, the state law might not be very clear. I think we've all read it 10 different times and read it 10 different ways, as far as this one particular issue. But I, I think that's, I think it's what we have to stay focused on. And I'm not sure that we can go much further than what state law gives us power to do.
Peter?
I just, historical perspective, more recent and then in the past. Recently, I started in legislature in, oh, oh, God, I can't remember. Six, I, I can't remember.
Don't take it so long.
But, you know, at that time, the state board was kind of a placeholder, but laws have really changed since then. Act 153, Act 153, I think it was 94, giving the, the governor the authority to appoint the secretary. Act 46, this has really changed what we're doing as a board. And that's really intensified the scrutiny of what we're doing, and, and politically made it more, whatever, acute, or, you know, sensitive, or whatever. And then in the past, the state board would often get walloped for whatever the public didn't like what was happening in education, the first, they, they went after the state board. That was the first, first line of attack. So we have to sort of keep that in mind and, face the music and keep prevailing, I hope.
Is it, do you see the state board becoming more, I mean, the Act 46 stuff is really administrative? I mean, we're administering, we're approving specific administrative proposals.
Like forerunner to our conversations starting tomorrow, because I think, like Bill said, it's a perfect day to start about
Yeah.
what is our role in statute?
Yeah.
And then, sort of, we're gonna get a review by Donna around Act 46, because now Act 49 has changed our role once again.
Right.
When it comes to Act 46. So it's added some additional things, and it's moved some priorities, and there are things that we need to do. And I think it, to take yours, kind of a little bit, you're saying, Peter, sometimes we get given the jobs that's hard to do in the legislature, if you have to decide what does it mean to be geographically isolated. That's sometimes hard to do in the legislature, and they then assign us that job, because they know it's difficult. And so they, they charge us with those things. And so we've been charged with more
They want, they want someone else to do it also.
Well, it's the old, you know, certain stuff slides downhill.
That's our role sometimes.
But it is gonna have a huge impact, too, how you solve that.
Right.
Absolutely.
And so those are things that Donna's gonna talk to us about tomorrow.
Yeah.
What's changed now with Act 46 because of Act 49, and this year forward, what does that mean for us as a board? And then at the end of the day, we're gonna look at our own strategic plan, and, and when you look at it, what changes need to be made to it? And, and keeping in mind, that was made two, two years ago, two, three years ago, and a lot has changed since then. And so how, what does that mean for our strategic plan and what edits need to be made?
The big difference between before and after 153, or before and after 46, was there's, now there's a date certain where something has to happen.
Right.
Up until then, it was all voluntary at the local, based on what's happening at the local level.
So I think these are all good conversations that we're gonna kind of culminate tomorrow. Yeah.
And I just want to say, I'd be, I'd be a little careful about assuming that what you're doing with the current merger proposals is just administrative processing.
Yeah.
Because I, I think that would be a serious mistake, because what you are seeing is the beginning of regional conversations. And so you've got, think of it as a large puzzle, jigsaw puzzle. You have pieces of it that you're beginning to get insight, but at some point in 2019, you actually have to figure out how to make an entire puzzle. And, and that is gonna take
Yeah.
a tremendous amount of careful thinking, sophisticated insight, and careful deliberation. And so this is really foundational learning to be able to exercise wise judgment in a couple of years.
I should clarify my, my comment, not administrative. It, it is the implementation of policy. You know, I, when I first applied to be on the board, the state board of ed, I assume, would be mostly policy-based. And this is actually not policy-based, it's actually implementing policy. Would you, I mean, it's something different that I don't think we've done in the past, is actually having individual
Take our track, son.
schools come in and approve them based on the policy that was presented by the legislature, Act 46.
But the work that you're doing is going to inform, inform some of the policy that you will be creating. And I guess my point is
Yeah.
that thoughtful policy is actually not developed in one year. And part of this is, is really actually preparing you to be able to make good policies in a couple of years. And if you aren't diligent right now, I think we'll really struggle as a board in a year or two, because there are going to be some profound choices to make, and those are tough. And, and just two more comments on it. I mean, when, when, at the agency, we think about implementing policy, we actually can't think of the one little piece of law, we have to think of the totality of laws. That's part of why we're slow, because we have to read the whole green book and figure out all the different pieces that go through. Because a lot of what we're weighing isn't just this little passage here, it's this other passage over here, and how that plays in, and what the state constitution says about who's responsible for what, and what people's individual rights are. And we have to weigh all of that together. And then the other piece, you know, I, I heard your comment about regulation. We struggle with that, too, but when the law is very specific, we actually have to conform to the law, even if it makes sometimes very contradictory regulations. So I, I hear you. But it's, 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 it's complicated. It's not clear always what the right answer is. So we do make policy, because we have to take apparently contradictory pieces of statute
Makes sense of them.
and try to figure out what intent was, to the best of our ability. And sometimes we need to go back to the legislature and say, legislature, this actually makes absolutely no sense, you need to fix this law.
There must be common conflicts with state and federal laws and regulations, too.
No, because federal trumps state, for the most part.
Right, but if you have, but
There are things we do
you have to take into account the federal legislation, the federal law, in order to make the state policy, even if state law says something different.
That's correct. That's correct.
So Rebecca, do you want to move into your report? I noticed we kind of
Well, since, since John brought us to the fes, let's talk about the fes.
Fair enough.
And, and Bill brought this up as well. And I, some of you may have caught in the newspaper that the US Department of Ed is beginning to release the ESA plans. A bunch of us turned in our plans, they're beginning to piece them out. They've released feedback or responses to Delaware, Nevada, and New Mexico. Interestingly, they had less than 24 hours' notice that their response was coming out, which is interesting. That's a very unusual break from past practice, where usually we got the heads up prior, including a release of the draft. And so what it does do, because we can read those, is it gives us the first data we have on how the new administration will treat these state plans and the review of the ESA plans. And as Bill said, there is tremendous diversity. We made a decision to only include a subset of what we care about in Vermont in our federal plan. Other states, the entire accountability is their federal plan. They don't really have a state plan independent of the federal plan. So you're going to see different kinds of plans reflecting different decisions about whether just to have federal accountability, or whether to have a state accountability system, and then pull a slice of it out for purposes of the federal government. This review of state plans is always, and has been, a process that's an iterative, back and forth process. We are assuming that the federal government will give us some feedback, or ask for additional clarification or work. We expected, actually, when we submitted it, that there were some decisions we'd made that they would want to discuss. Where our hope is that that feedback will make the plans stronger. But we have noticed that in some of the initial feedback that was given to some of the other states so far, contrary to what Secretary DeVos had initially said, it does seem like there are a couple of places where US Ed is asking other states to go beyond the statute in what it's asking states to revise. So we do see some places where the federal government seems to be going beyond ESA in terms of its requirements. And we also
Pushing back.
Yes, they are. And CCSO is, is gonna be coordinating some of that information as well. And we also see some places where maybe, you know, that, that may be not consistent with federal statute, we'll work on that. And there are also places where we think the department took a very narrow interpretation, in ways that we really feel contradict the expressed intent of the statute. And one is that, you know, as you were mentioning, some states are using more diverse indicators. We believe that it was the intent of the bipartisan group that pa, Congress that passed ESSA, to push people to move beyond the very narrow test-focused instruction, just English, language, arts, and math. And we believe that the, the current administration is really heaving to a narrower view in terms of indicators than we think the bipartisan Congress that passed the bill is, was intending. So we do expect to have some conversation around that as we move forward. And in all things, we hope, and we will look for your support, and I think Amy will bring this up, but we're gonna focus on what we think is most educationally sound for the children of Vermont, and we're gonna work to just ensure that that's reflected in our plan. We will be working with other states through the Council of Chief State School Officers to coordinate, get information, and to really formulate a response. The next round of plans is going to be released on the 26th, which is next week. If ours is in that next batch, we may hear on the 25th that it's coming out. And then we will have, it looks like 15 days to respond to any feedback, or all feedback that they give us at that point. So it's extremely, extremely short turnaround. And you'll also notice the interesting timing for, for the Agency of Education. So if we are not highly responsive in that window after the 26th, you now know why. Because, because really, that will be our, our first priority at that point.
Is that calendar days or business days?
That is also unclear at this point. So that we're trying to figure that out right now in working with, with CCSO.
So when are we, when are we trying to get the final plan approved?
This, well, we wanted, they have 100 and whatever, 20 days from the time that they consider the submission complete. And one of the reasons we think they're giving us short turnaround time is to make sure that they keep that process moving. If they don't approve it by the 120 days, then it sort of goes into effect. So we think that this is their way of keeping that moving. I need to actually count. I'll have Amy give you the exact count when she comes in tomorrow.
I'm sure she is the calendar.
Yeah, she, I'm sure she's, she, believe me, she is all over this. I, I know Haley has, Haley Dover from the Agency of Education has already drafted a press release announcing the release, and we'll just modify it when we get the feedback from US Ed to, to be out and appropriate. And I know that you've been working with the ESSA team to think about communications to the field as this moves forward. So we are, we're on deck, we're ready to go. People have been clearing their decks in anticipation of that. If it's not the 26th, it'll be shortly thereafter, we're assuming. Seems to be every couple of weeks they're planning to release some. We assume we'll be somewhere either on the 26th or within two weeks of that date.
I'm sorry for the stupid question, but
There are no stupid questions.
Well, this might be a stupid question. US Department of Ed, do they have regional offices, or is everything out of DC?
It's coming out of DC.
Everything's out, it's not like HHS or Transportation where they have, okay. So everything is coming out of the Beltway?
Yes.
Great.
Well, truly, the regional offices are Beltway, too, at this point.
Okay.
So the next thing I wanted to, some really exciting, good news. I know our communications team has been working on an education campaign, so for 10 weeks over the course of the summer, led by Haley and Stephanie. The Vermont Agency of Education will be promoting some different aspects of Vermont and Vermont education through an online education campaign. And basically, it's starting, you know, all year, we hear all these amazing stories of interesting things that people are doing in, you know, all of our schools. And Haley and Stephanie have been working really hard to grab some examples of that, and to find a way to sort of, you know, push them back out, and then engage people on social media around some of those initiatives. Each week is going to address a different theme. I think she sent out the communication, it may have gone out in the last couple of minutes. It probably did, so it's in your email, you just haven't seen it yet. But the idea is to have a, a theme, and then create opportunities for the field to engage around that theme over the next, over the next 10 weeks.
Does it feature?
In-state audience?
It's targeting in-state. We often try to tag our congressional delegation, because we find we get a big bump on social media whenever we tag them, so.
And through social media, how are you, how's this being pushed out? Is it?
It's on Twitter and on Facebook, and we'll try to get some Instagrams on there, too, and then they have the content, with photos and stuff that we can share.
But it's everything from farm to school to personalized pathways, and, you know, pre-K, universal pre-K, so it's, it's gonna cover the spectrum of kinds of interesting sort of good news stories and mistakes.
Does it feature students and educators in some cases, or is it more, mostly broader?
Yeah, I don't want to, I'm afraid to talk about, because one of my favorites is coming up, and it's really funny.
Okay.
But there are some, there are some samples, I want to keep, save the thunder for when it comes out, but there's some great little videos put together by students.
Okay.
You know, things like that. And we're hoping that people will also tag onto it, so when we send something out, we're hoping that people will also add and submit their own pieces as well. So it, it should be hopefully fun. Just a quick cover-up, I just noticed another study came out based on the, the per people spending. This was based on census data, and it does look like Vermont is slowly dropping down in its rank as a high-spending state, something to think about.
What are we now?
Well, according to this one, and who knows if it's right, because it depends who you talk to, but we're now at six, from one.
What's number one?
Uh, number one is New York, followed by Alaska.
Massachusetts is probably in the top.
Is number eight.
Eight?
Connecticut?
Connecticut is four. District of Columbia is three, Jersey, New Jersey is five. Usually we're neck and neck with New Jersey. Wyoming is seven. And what we tend to see is it's a rural thing. Rural states with dispersed, you know, small, it's small scale. The more units you have serving small numbers of students, the higher your overhead, the more expensive you are across all sectors.
What's the New York, it's just high-cost location?
Um, what's that?
New York must be high-cost location, like Long Island, upstate New York, New York City?
Uh, it's, um, it's, um
New York, Connecticut.
It's just, it's high cost, yes. Yeah. This is, this is across all those contexts.
And then Wyoming's below us.
Yeah.
New Jersey is always right up there, neck and neck with us. But they also
With the exception of Wyoming.
they fund heavily across diverse support services.
We're usually right around Wyoming with the rural.
They do more in after-school and other things than we do. Ours tends to be in overhead. I think theirs tends to be in other things.
Services?
Yeah. So just, just to also hook you, just keep it on your mind, when people talk about education funding, just generally, I, I did want to just acknowledge, because you're gonna probably start hearing about it, as people, you know, we're closing out our budget year, you may know that we have been asked to come up with a possible 2%, 3%, and 4% rescission of our general fund. So the agencies are looking at state government cuts in funding as well, and we are evaluating that right now. We don't expect to apply that to the state board, so we'll hold you harmless again this year, because we actually don't know that you could, you can do with much less. But we will be making possibly some additional cuts to education. We also know that when we look at the budget, there's some, you know, we, we are assuming that there will continue to be continuing pressures on our school systems. We know that, for example, this budget includes the use of pretty substantial one-time reserves, unallocated, unappropriated, unapplied reserves to, to close a hole. That does mean that you might be going in with a structural deficit next year, if we can't find a way to harvest some of those efficiencies. So, you know, I think the reality is that we are possibly continuing to look at a pretty tight fiscal form, you know, context moving into the next year. We know that, you know, I think that the new TIFs are wonderful at promoting economic development. We know that the, I really think that the new TIF tax incremental funding for districts is interesting, because it allows for a little more flexibility in who's eligible, so that benefit is given to new areas, including some places more, that are maybe more rural, that might not have been able to take advantage of that economic development tool, which is, which is really great. I mean, it's great for places like Springfield, possibly, but it does possibly also reduce revenue into the ed fund, and the obvious implication is it has to be picked up by those who are in the ed fund.
Still the same, the 75% of the taxes due on the property can be used to pay off bonding?
I, I forget the exact details in the new bill, but yes. I mean, the idea is that you, you basically, you cap your, the amount of your revenue, your tax base that's eligible, that pays into the ed fund.
Yeah, so if you had a parcel.
And you reserve a portion of it, yes.
So just, so if you had a parcel, and you're gonna bring in public infrastructure, you could bond that, and then take 75% of the local and school taxes due on that to pay off the debt. So it does
It reduces what you pay into the ed fund.
Pounds love it, but the ed fund, it doesn't help the ed fund.
No, it doesn't.
You talking about TIFs?
Yeah. So again, it's, it's, on the one hand, it's great to support economic development. We all know we need to be doing that right now. The flip side is it does mean we're gonna be tightening our belts in the ed fund. And, you know, we, we do see that, you know, we were going through a period where we had a sort of a surplus in special ed, that we think was a function of the transition of special ed services from the district level up to the supervisory union, supervisory district level. It did look like perhaps boards were struggling in that transition to accurately budget, but we think that figment has gone away, so we think we're budgeted more accurately this year, which means that we don't anticipate a big growing surplus associated with that. So we won't continue to occlude that, that surplus moving forward. So there are, you know, I just wanted to say this, that we are, we are looking at this. We know that we're continuing to lose students in the state. We know that there are new demands coming forward with respect to substance abuse prevention that may create upward pressures. And we know that there are logistical, one of the things we're seeing around pre-K, is there still is some upward pressure on ed fund budgets, people hiring staff to coordinate the business end of things at the SU office. So there are continued pressures. We will continue to try to manage it. We're working very closely around special ed in particular, and trying to figure out ways to sort of support school boards in the fall around special ed and implementation of special ed, using some work from the District Management Council to try to help people think about whether we can rethink some of our service delivery there to achieve more effective services at a lower price. And I think there are opportunities, but it is going to be an ongoing conversation. And then obviously, this, we, we are still waiting to see what develops in the federal budget, but as, as we've discussed previously, you know, in some of our systems, up to 30% of what they spend locally in some of them is, is federal dollars. And depending what happens at the federal level, if those federal dollars are cut back, you may see an effort by school districts to backfill with local dollars, you may see an effort by school districts to backfill with local dollars or state dollars rather. And if they do, then that would have a significant impact on the ed fund burden as well. So again, you know, just, I think we need to be mindful going in. And, you know, I think the governor has said several times, the one thing that, sure, is a business as usual is not possible. And I think that is true. And so we all just need to take a deep breath and just keep focusing on what is important and good for our kids and for the state and all be willing to be a little flexible about how we get there because it will be a tight year.
There was another report about the well-being of our youth that I thought was interesting. It used to be like one or two, we're down to five, and the primary reason is the cost of housing, that the impact on parents and whatnot and that issue, which...
What's that?
There's a youth survey national that...
Kids Count, we can send it.
Yeah, so like Massachusetts, New Hampshire, they're mostly in New England, the top states. I think it's Massachusetts, New Hampshire, I don't, I can't remember the third one.
Connecticut, yeah.
And we are fifth. But we used to be right up at one or two for quite a while.
Haley will send that report to the board, she's going to do that right now. It's Kids Count.
Yeah.
But there's another one that put us at third.
Wellness, yeah, yeah.
Kids Count put us at third, I believe, but she'll send it to you.
May I just, I'm interested in the detail that you give. I sometimes feel though that we are not seeing the forest for the trees. You know, the great bank robber Willie Sutton was asked, why do you rob banks? And his answer was, because that's where the money is. Well, where the money is, is in teacher salaries, 80%. We are, I happen to think that an authentic strategic threat to education in Vermont is that it is unaffordable. We are a state of very ordinary means with a Cadillac system. Cadillac in the sense that it is among the most costly in America. And why is that? Because student populations have gone down by 20% over the last 20 years and teacher staffing has gone up by 5% or 7% at the same time. That's a 27% gap in the most expensive part of education, which is teachers. And it feels like nobody in the legislature or in this room is willing to say the only way out of this is to reduce the level of teacher staff. The only way to bring the cost of education into an affordable level is to face the elephant in the room, which is reductions in staff. I know nobody wants to hear that, but there isn't a business in the world that operates with reduced revenues and doesn't solve the problem by reducing staffing.
Mark, yeah?
I think you're on to one thing in terms of economy of size, for sure. And I don't think you can talk about teachers until you talk about the buildings. And when you start talking about buildings, you're talking about towns and individual districts. So it gets very complicated really fast because there's only so many teachers you can reduce within a certain building, which is within a certain school district. And that kind of ties in with, you know, Act 46 and the work with Act 46 and so forth, for sure. I totally agree with you, you know, the forest for the trees. And we have a tremendous amount of spirit in the state in terms of being independent and not wanting to be told how to operate in our own backyard. And so I think that goes to the whole point of, you know, how we move forward as a board that have been given statutory limits and how we go about dealing with education as a whole. And that, you know, that thought is always on my mind because I've been involved with school boards for 17 years. And it's a tricky thing to get at too. But I really don't think, on the surface, you can talk about teachers until you start talking about schools and the number of people that are within schools.
So we would then expect Act 46 to achieve significant savings for us by larger so-called economies of scale?
And how do you get to that?
Where's the data showing that that's happening?
Well, you get that by creating conversations, and that's what Secretary Holcomb was alluding to earlier. So we're at the early stages of that, I believe.
Rainbow?
I mean, I do agree that Vermont education is very expensive in that it's one of our largest expenditures in the state as a whole. But, I mean, because of Act 77 and the whole specialty that Vermont has with personalized learning, students continue to like need more attention when it comes from the teachers themselves. Like, we have, I think, the lowest teacher, student-teacher ratio in the country. But we continue to see situations where we actually need an even smaller student-teacher ratio in many cases. For example, in many schools, even my own school, which we have a very low student-teacher ratio. Like, we see situations where we don't have enough staffing for the certain classes that we want to teach. For example, we only have one AP class because we do not have the teachers or the support that we need. And while our neighboring districts, I do agree that some salaries are crazy high in our neighboring districts, our teachers are actually getting paid less than the state average. And in Chitting County, that's pretty crazy itself. And so I think there's a balance and kind of like an equity situation in terms of district to district, looking at, in the situations, how personalized is it? And like how much attention you need to give to your students per teacher? And then in traditional structures, I'll also talk about this later in my presentation. I noticed that traditional structures, it doesn't matter the teacher-student-teacher ratio is, but as you get more personalized, you actually need a lower and lower ratio for what I think a more successful process. But that's from my perspective within the school building itself. But I do agree in some situations that we could try to reduce spending. But by cutting staffing, it, I think, will only damage the schools even more, even though we do have a lot of money into our teachers.
John, you said the people in this room are willing to look at this question of staffing. I think everybody in the room knows that staffing is the driver of the cost. And it's, like you say, 80, I would say 85% of the cost. And yes, we do have some favorable ratios and there's ways to deal with that. But you also pose the question of people aren't willing to look at the real problems. I'd like to suggest that the real problem we're not looking at is poverty and the effects of poverty in terms of children and how we have a good educational system here at the top for some people, but not for others. I think Act 46 is going to drive some of these conversations when we start seeing socioeconomic disparities between towns. And we're going to have to deal with that. And that's going to inevitably drive us back towards jobs and looking at social services, education, and the economy as being an integrated unit. And we're not doing that.
And I do want to make sure we move on, and we can bring this up next day. I do want to say, just, I mean, as the elephant in the room, I am a teacher. And I, yeah. And I think right now in the state, there's been a lot of teacher bashing. So I want to be mindful of the fact and the ramifications of, it's, there's been a lot of, because of conversations about healthcare, a lot of on the internet and social media, and a lot of just general attacks on teachers. And I think we do need to be mindful. And one thing I know as a teacher, for teaching to work, you actually have to have people do more than they're supposed to. And when you're under attack, it's very hard to say, I'm going to go do more. And so I just want to be mindful as a board, as we talk and have these conversations. We're talking about people and their careers. And also be mindful that Vermont teachers are the lowest-paid in New England. And so we already are some of the lowest-paid teachers in New England and producing some of the results that we keep up with those other New England states. And I did an exercise in my economics class, and we looked at, can you afford to go to college and become a teacher and teach in the state of Vermont? And the answer was no. So when you look at the expensive college and then what it takes to then get a job in the state of Vermont, and then you look at the salaries in surrounding states. So I just want to be mindful of when we have a conversation that it's not, doesn't evolve into teacher bashing. Because I think the teachers in the state of Vermont do an amazing job. And as Bill said, because of the poverty level, sometimes do more than what's just teaching. Sometimes you're bringing breakfast to kids at school. Sometimes, you know, I had students that I had to bring in clothes because they didn't have clothes. And I would bring in clothes I was going to give to Goodwill and give to students. So our teachers around the state go well above and beyond. So I, but it is a driver in cost of education. And so how do we have that conversation that we don't devolve into teacher attacks? Or even start a conversation that we don't mean to? And then it devolves into attacks within social media, which has been demoralizing for the teaching profession.
Of course. Are you suggesting that there's any teacher bashing going on in this discussion?
No, I said, I said we need to be mindful because sometimes even when we...
Do you think there's any prospect that any of us would indulge in that?
No, but I feel like sometimes people reach out and they might see something and say, oh, they're saying teachers are too expensive. And then that drives some more teacher bashing. And I've just, I've seen that in conversations in my own district, within the own state. And then you're the receiving end of teacher bashing. And so that's why I'm just saying, being mindful of, knowing where a conversation that might not be intended with that, how it can start another conversation. So making sure we're very clear when we're talking about teachers. And maybe instead of, you know, we look at the ratios of students. I think Mark brought up the buildings. Because when you go look at the amount of buildings that we have, and to keep that, to meet EQS, we need so much staff. And so the staff, and maybe that's where we need to look, and that's why I agree with Mark.
I think it's a really good discussion that I have about student-teacher numbers, that said. And I think what we see in our data, and we did some analysis a couple of years ago, is that the bigger systems are able to adjust their staffing numbers when there's declining enrollment in ways that some of the smaller systems can't. Because you have to have, you have to have a math teacher, you can't not have a math teacher. And as schools become very small, it becomes difficult to downsize your staff proportional with your students without really losing what it means to be a school. And so I think that that's a big, big piece of the challenge. I think, Mark, you're right on the money on that one. And I just need to add, that is actually true for both the independent school sector and the public school sector. But we don't have any influence on the independent school sector. And it's something to think about. The most expensive districts in the state currently are actually the tuition towns, like tuition at every level in terms of ed spending per pupil. And part of it is, when you don't have any means to bring kids in under fewer roofs, you lose any ability to get to economies of scale. And as a state, that's a hard conversation. If we really are worried about our costs, we need to think about possible ways to harvest economies or take advantage of economies of scale. And it could be through hubs. And one of the things we noticed in your area, actually, Rutland Northeast post-merger, I think they reduced their staff this year, about 17 teachers, just through attrition. They just didn't fill positions when people retired. So they are well on their way to beginning to downsize their staff. But because they're a bigger unit, they're able to do it without injuring any of the member schools. And they're actually beginning to play with their campuses in a different way so that they can, you know, if by moving grades from some school into another school, they can actually have affordably sized classes. You just can't do that when you're too small a unit. And that's the challenge, and that's a hard conversation. But until these districts are able to get to that scale, they don't actually have the flexibility to make some of those decisions. But we are starting to see those happen right now.
Do we, you know, I've actually looked at what our teachers in my community make on the public side. And I actually don't think they're overpaid at all. You know, based on the number of teachers that live in the community itself, they're probably underpaid. Do we have any data on teachers' salaries by district?
Yeah, it's all online, yeah.
Okay.
It's all public information.
And I assume there's probably quite a bit of disparity between one district and the other.
Oh, yeah.
Teachers in more urban areas make about $10,000 a year more in terms of income, yes.
And how about, we don't know independent schools though, right?
Yes, I think south, well, I know Burn Burton's among the highest in the state.
Yeah, I know you said that before. I can't see it, you know, you can't see payroll. I can see our local payroll at the elementary school. I do agree with Mark's point though that, you know, if you've got, you know, eight sixth graders, you need one teacher. Or if you've got 16, you need one teacher. So part of it is the scale, you know, a lot of our communities probably don't suffer from this, but some of the smaller districts, it's only so small you can break that piece of chocolate before you can't get it any smaller. You've got to staff, you know, each classroom in most cases with one teacher. So I think that's one of the challenges that we...
And that's what Rutland Northeast is doing. So for example, I think it's, is it Whiting and?
Whiting, Sudbury.
So they're moving, they're becoming a K2 school and a 3-6 or something like that. And because of that, as teachers retire, they're not firing anyone, but as teachers retire, they're able to, instead of having two Ks with five kids, have one K with 10 kids at one site by moving the kids into, under one roof. That way, each of the schools has a school, each of the communities has a school, but they're just able to play with grade spans in a way to make it more affordable. So I think that is how people are starting to maintain small, but also do it in a way that's more affordable to taxpayers.
And I think we can have this discussion without, you know, so-called teacher bashing. You know, by talking about, you know, what are the numbers and what are the ratios? And really, the ratios have nothing to do with like teachers. They're just a fact of whatever the systems are, like Mark was talking about, you know, what is the building size? How big is the building? So I do hope in the future that we have more conversations like this, so we can start to get a handle on it, start to figure out what...
And there's great data on the website, and you can even, I know I've gone through and looked at it, and there's more general staff in schools sometimes than there are teachers. So when you look at what it takes to maintain a building. So it's really interesting when you start looking at the breakdown. But I want to give Rainbow the last word, and then we're going to move on. So Rainbow?
Yeah, just a final comment that I thought about when Bill was speaking. At last year's Roland Conference, Jonathan Kozel came to speak about the closing the achievement gap in Vermont schools. Because that was a theme of the conference that day. And it was really interesting to hear what he had to say about quantity versus quality in a nutshell, about assigning our best teachers to the, what I guess you would say, the normal kids and having less experienced teachers and even more experienced teachers to more disadvantaged students. So like giving substitute teachers to, or like not full-time teachers, like not 1.0 FTE teachers, assigned to very disadvantaged kids. He talked about working in DC and working in a very high-poverty, like minority school. And he was a substitute teacher working in the school. And while all the teachers were going to different districts and getting paid more simply because of that. But, I mean, sometimes you can like close the whole gap between expenditures by perhaps, instead of having three less experienced teachers to a very disadvantaged group, how about one high-quality teacher to this disadvantaged group? And it's just really interesting to hear when Bill was speaking about poverty, like how can we close the achievement gap and still make the same results while also trying to get like what everyone wants in a school, like economic costs, helping our poorest and making sure that everyone has quality education. And so, I don't know, just a thought that I had about quantity versus quality in terms of perhaps looking at that problem.
Thank you, Rainbow. At this point, if we could, Secretary, you're all...
I'm done.
You're done. I think we co-opted that quite nicely. And then if, Peter, if you want to come on up and introduce yourself for the record. And this is in your packet item K.
Good morning. So I'm Peter Drescher, and I'm the Education Technology Coordinator for the Agency of Education. And I just wanted to start by thanking you all for allowing me to have an audience for this. What I think is important, piece of standard work that impacts our education technology, education technology programs in our schools. And of course, with that touches every content area as well. And I think it's important that we continually update these standards as we go along. And you'll see kind of the progression this has had in this conversation. But I need to start though, I was asked to start this conversation by talking about your new, a new procedure for making changes for standards and the approval within this process. So as you see by this slide here, this kind of has the breakdown of, and I, Secretary Holcomb, maybe you can help me. I think that this board had input into this process as well, is that correct?
Well, I think that this, what I think we were trying to do is clean up behind the scenes more to make sure that when you've got presentations related to initiating a review of standards, that there was a more consistent process.
So I'm here today, and I'm here today for the first step of this process. So I'm going to talk about, you know, the rationale for changing the standards or adopting a new set of standards, updated ones. And then there's a period of time that seeking a public input, and I'll talk about how I'm doing that this summer. In fact, right now, there's a survey out to do that. And then planning to come later in the, I think we had discussed maybe coming in September and trying to then get approval for, moving forward with adopting the standards as you'll see them today, so.
So some of you who are new to the board and some of you who are not new to the board, the most recent ones were the arts standards, where over a period of months, we came with some suggestions for updating art standards, reviewed available resources, available standards, took public comment from public, but also from arts educators around the state, and then brought back to you some final recommendations for setting standards. And the standards are really the educational goals. And the standards are really the educational goals. It just defines the endpoint for where we want people to, to target. And then the actual curriculum itself is designed locally. We don't, we don't design that in the state of Vermont. And I actually think that what Peter is presenting today is one of the, you've identified seven areas in the education quality standards that you think are critically important. And I think, Peter, you're really hitting the last one that they have not yet attended to.
You need to say that last.
I think the area that you're presenting today, that we need to reopen and review, is the last area that this board has not reviewed since the passage of those standards.
And this is something this board has done in the past, and I'll, I'll get to that, so. Is this clear? Are there any questions about this particular part? I just want to make sure you all understand the process that, moving forward, how the agency will bring these to the board, so. All right. So as I said, I'm, I'm, this is the first step of this approval process. And I'm opening the education technology standards for review. And we currently have, we currently use these same standards. We use the 2007 version of these standards that you're looking at. There are three sets of them. There are student ones, teacher ones, and administrator. And they have done a refresh of those. Last year, last June, the standard, the student standards were refreshed in about four days at the ISTI conference, which I'm about to attend. They will do the teacher standards, and then the administrative standards will be done in 2018. So I'm coming here today to kind of talk about the stand, the, the student and teacher standards as we move forward. Chiefly today, obviously, the, the student standards, because those are the ones that are gonna impact most directly at the, at the school level, so. In 2009, this board adopted these, these, the, the standards from 2007 in the same fashion. But these have been updated since then, so we'll talk a little bit about that. You all have, I think you all have, yeah, you're looking at them there. So, basically, the way the standards have, have worked is, these are, these are fairly broad standards. You can see that they have the seven headings that, that are under there. And really, what I think is the key here is the, the timing for this, it couldn't be better. I think with our work that we have done with education quality standards, and certainly with personalized learning, proficiency-based graduation, these standards much more align with that thinking that we have in Vermont. The ones from 2007, there was one, they, they kind of, they had six categories within that, and they kind of have switched around the last three here. Computational thinker, creative communicator, global collaborator, those were expand, those were kind of built and expanded to bring another category into that. So what they've really done here is try to, try to bring more, more, you know, move to the transition of more of, you know, thinking about the Cs, communication, collaboration, creativity, those things that go into how technology supports those things in classrooms. I, I think that it's relevant to think about, like, computational thinker goes along with the lines of how there's a, there's a great interest in coding and programming these days. So that's kind of addressed that piece there. Innovative designer, I think about that really with flexible pathways, and how we think about students designing, you know, you know, showing mastery of subject level, but using technology tools to do that. And so, you know, students having that choice of being able to choose the different, you know, whatever, different presentation software, or a different, you know, application that they may use to demonstrate that, that mastery or that, that learning. Digital citizenship, that's another one that, that I'm seeing more and more the schools are really focusing on that, and using that as a, as a real kind of rallying point around, you know, how the students get to understand cybersecurity, and what it means to be online, and those kinds of things. So I think that the, the, ISTI, of course, International Society for Technology and Education, they've done a really nice job of kind of trying to broaden these standards out. And, you know, certainly Vermont is not the only one working towards this thing of having more learner cent, you know, learner-centered curriculum and those kinds of things. So I think these have done really well at aligning with that, so. You know, there are, there are other standards out there. The ITEA ones, or the International Tech, Technology and Education Association. We had some standards that we used, actually, we used the 2007 ISTI standards and, and kind of aligned those with our grade expectations in 2010, and did some work with that. Partnership for 21st Century Skills, they also had a set of standards. They, they, they sort of parallel these ISTI standards pretty closely, so. I, I think most of the reason for picking ISTI, the ISTI standards, is they're widely recognized. A lot of our Vermont teachers are already familiar with them because of the work that was done in 2010, and in aligning those with the grade expectations. So I think kind of staying the course and staying with these, with these particular standards is, is a good, is a good move for Vermont to do that, so.
Peter, Peter, can you talk about your relationship with SETA, and also, I think, I think you're saying that, but I think you also want to do the due diligence of reviewing.
Sure, yeah. Part of it, too, is that CEDA is, is the State Education Technology Directors Association. I've been very involved with that organization for the time that I've worked at the agency, and actually, a little bit before. And I'm on the board of that organization, and we have a pretty strong relationship with ISTI. So we actually had a, a significant role in helping to create these new standards as well. We were invited to be part of a, it was last fall, at our, at our, one of our annual meetings, we were invited to have a session where we contributed to the, the standards creation. So, you know, I think there's some, there's, Vermont being active in CEDA for that long has some good connection there to the, both these, both of these national organizations, so.
So I, I, it's a roundabout way of saying, there's been very active involvement by our technology educator, our information technology teachers in the development of the standards, so there's a pretty high level of investment in the field, in these. So we need to be aware, you know, mindful of that as we look at the review.
Yeah, we want, we want to keep that, we want to keep it, you know, strike while the iron's hot. We want to keep, if people are interested and they, and they'd like to, you know, I think the work that was done in 2010, we kind of did a crosswalk with the grade expectations and the IST standards. I see that work, doing that again with these, with EQS. And, and I know that there's a number of educators out there who are very interested in that work, so, you know, I feel like keeping them involved is, is crucial. A question.
Yes, Mr. Drescher, thank you for your presentation. I'm a new member of the board, and pretty ignorant of a lot of these matters. So I am interested to understand what difference this makes, and how do we know it's making a difference for students in Vermont?
That's, that's a good question. I, I think, in terms of making a difference, I think that it's important for teachers, here, here's one of the things, there's a National Education Technology Plan that was written in 2015, and it had a piece within it called the digital use divide, which talked about how, when you walk down a hallway at a particular school, you know, there may have been two teachers in that hallway that actually use technology regularly in a classroom, and, 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 you know. So it's inequitable. In other words, like, so if you, if you're a student in that school, and you use, you happen to be in those two teachers' classrooms, you're gonna be using technology to support, to, to support your learning. What we try, we try to do with the standards piece is, if we can bring this to the forefront of all the teachers in the building, I think that we have a better chance of then kind of sharing that knowledge that happens with those two classrooms into sharing it with all the classrooms in the.
That makes sense, but we've been doing this now in an earlier form.
We have.
Six or five or six years, I guess. So what is the data that shows that you've achieved this?
I have a, a technology survey that I do, that I, that's on our website, shows the results of that. We're seeing, we're seeing more actual integration of technology into the classroom. And when I say that, I'm talking more kind of authentic integration, where it's something that's not just using the PowerPoint, the PowerPoint or the whiteboard in the room, but they're actually having students use video to demonstrate learning, you know, some understanding of some learning they've done. Or they're having students create an application that may impact some level of, something at the school that's going on, that, that is a, I don't know. I'm thinking of one that did something with the cafeteria, where they were trying to find out about, you know, what food was recycled or such, such at the, at the cafeteria. So, I, I mean, it, it's both anecdotal, and we have some, you know, quantitative data as well.
And the quantitative data shows what?
Increasing use of, of technology applications in, that are sort of real-world applications into classroom instruction. So in terms of outcomes, you're, you're asking, do we know if it's measured increased learning, I think is your question.
Yes. It's sort of a two-part question. What is the evidence that this has made a difference, and, or that the world is different as a result of the passage of time here? And then the question gets to be, is it this program and these standards that's making this difference? Or is it changes in the availability of technology in families? And, in other words, what would have happened if we hadn't done this?
Yes.
You always have to ask these questions.
You're, you're asking, you're asking a very big question in the world of education technology. We can't necessarily, there is not evidence necessarily pointing towards education technology being the factor that made, you know, student achievement rise at a particular school.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to see, what's the level of deployment?
Right.
And, and what level of deployment would there have been absent this program? So that, that's all I'm getting, I'm not holding you accountable for overall achievement of students.
Right, no, no, yeah, no, no, I see that, I see that.
Out of our, out of the EQS document, we say there needs to be standards around technology, so as a board, it's our responsibility to make sure there are the standards out there for people to follow.
So then I.
And so you're asking whether these.
The question is, what difference does it make?
Yeah, whether it's these standards or another standard. Is that the question that you're asking?
Is it, are we making a difference by asserting these standards, and is there data to show that?
Okay, Rainbow?
I can kind of answer that. I mean, in our schools, like, regardless of whether or not you have the standards, because technology is becoming so ubiquitous, like, it's kind of like a mix of both, like, using the standards as, like, making a difference, and like, the whole, we have to follow society, otherwise we'll fall behind. I think, I think schools are kind of working with the whole idea that you have to catch up with society, and you have to make sure that you're using standards. And I think it's worked out fine in schools, because more schools are having more, like, one-on-one computer technology. If not, most students have a computer to use in the classrooms. And unlike traditional, like, oh, chalkboard, whiteboard standards, you can, like, explore making videos, or making animations, or making programs and all that stuff. I think it's made a bit more of a difference than had it, had you not have technology. Say, like, if you don't have technology, you'd just be like, you know, just writing papers as usual, or doing more traditional school standards. Like, I'm just so used to, like, technology now, that it's become in every student's everyday lives. So I think it's made quite the impact. And the standards, like, it just, like, reassures you that, oh, you should probably have technology in your classroom. It's just like another thing that we already kind of know.
John, and then Mark.
I have seen what you're talking about, more use of video during conferences and things like that, PowerPoints, voice-overs. My question is, do we know that, what percentage of Vermont students have assigned technology, like a laptop or something like that, or an iPad?
Example?
Say, are, are assigned technology?
Yeah, how many, how many kids actually have, like, a laptop or an iPad that's been assigned to them? Do we know those numbers?
Yeah, we do.
Is it all of them?
And I, and I can report some of that. So we, in fact, currently, and this goes to another slide, we'll, we'll skip to this.
Sorry, I wasn't gonna.
It's fine, it's fine.
But I just don't even know how many kids actually have access to this stuff.
Sure. We're, we're, the survey that I do, the annual technology survey, asks questions about one-to-one programs in schools. And I'm, I'm guessing, I'm guessing off the top of my head what it comes back to, but I believe we're at about a 50% mark of having a one-to-one program at some place in the school. That may be the whole school, a classroom, a wing of the school, or something like that. So a better, a better number is this, last year, we asked how many student devices were available for, you know, how many devices were available for student use in the school? And we have, what, 76,000 students? We have 85,000 devices in school, so. So I think at this point, we have, you know, enough devices for, for students to use.
Eighty thousand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's true.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
And that survey that I'm talking about is out right now as well, so, so we're collecting that data. But I want to go back to your question, because it, because it is a, a good one. You know, we don't, we don't necessarily have data to say that these make that kind of difference, but it does make a difference in this way. When a principal is looking to kind of make that happen within their school, they've got to have something that they can say, you know, there's something we're pushing this up against, you know, teacher X, or whatever, you know, there is something that, that, you know, we're required to have technology to support learning within our school, it's part of EQS, those kinds of things. But look, now, we have adopted, the state board has adopted, and we did have this same result when we did it in 2009. It, it just puts a little more, I don't know, I don't want to, teeth is too strong a word, but that's a good word, but a little more teeth in a, in a principal saying to their staff, you know, the expectation at this building is that we're using technology, these standards cover broad areas of the, of your curriculum and your content areas, so there's no reason you shouldn't be doing this. And I'm not saying that every one of our principals is successful in doing that, but I think if, if we can do this at the state level, and this, and this board can then, you know, say that, hey, we believe in these, we think this is important to do this, I think that gives us some, some leverage with the, with the, especially with leadership in, in doing that.
We have a lot of questions, so we have Mark, Ben, Stacy, and then Bill.
Wow. Okay, so mine may actually go more into the EQS discussion tomorrow, but it gets to what you were just talking about, empowering people within the building through the EQS process. The connected, connectivity, I know we talked about a few years ago, was an issue, and I'm going to assume that all schools are connected properly now. And then the quality of the IT professionals within the building, I know that that will ebb and flow depending upon who you have there.
Sure.
And does the, and, and does, I know the standards, as mentioned, don't necessarily derive that, the sort of the outcomes, as opposed to the in-between, how you get there. But through the EQS process, does, does, or the EQR, the review, actually, does, will we get to the quality of personnel in there? And then finally, the professional development piece, which is what you had just mentioned.
I'm, I'm gonna become part of the continuous improvement team's IFR process that they're doing, so I'm looking, I'm looking at that. In fact, right now, I'm kind of devising tools within that to do that work next, when we start next year, going out to schools and seeing that. I also do some of that on my own. I have a very, I don't know, I would say I have a very strong relationship with the community of tech, education technology people in the state. We do something like a technology, we were doing a technology coordinator summit this summer to kind of, you know, help with some professional development around that, that side of it. We're looking at things like student data privacy very carefully this year, where reflecting this year on the incident that happened at South Burlington High School with the cybersecurity breach that happened there. We actually have, I'm excited about, we have the FBI coming, they're gonna be part of that session and help people understand how best to deal with those kinds of things at schools. So, yeah, I mean, you're correct, it's all over the map as far as the quality that we have there, but we're trying very hard to kind of help that community, you know, strengthen their skills in, in doing these kinds of things, so.
But there's, there's teeth, there's teeth in the review process itself in regards to technology?
There, there's.
Teeth?
That's what I'm trying to develop at this point, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Stacy?
I have like seventeen more minutes here. I think I'm a little confused just in our general process here, what's happening. I feel like we were in the middle of a presentation, and I think we're having some whole big, like, philosophical discussion about do standards matter, and I think I would just like some clarity on, like, how we want to go about hearing from an expert and how we respond, because I want to respond to a bunch of small things, but I also feel like I'm in the middle of something, and I don't have all the information. Plus, our charge is whether we're authorizing the initiation of a review. And I think it would be helpful if the board said, here are some things, Peter, when you review, here are some things we'd be interested in hearing more about. But I feel like we're weighing in on whether or not the standards are accurate, and we haven't even heard the presentation. So I guess Chairman, you know, I would like there's some clarification on what we're doing right now, or if we're like, if this is where we're throwing out our random ideas, I have three or four I'd like to throw out, but I'd like to get some process.
And that's what the agency is asking for us, is just to review and to start the public input. So this is the very beginning of this process, and so that's what we're, we're looking to do. And I think you're trying to ask some very big philosophical questions, which I'm not sure if this is the right time, so you, to really, we're just saying, do they want to start a review? just saying, do they want to start a review? And is that something we're okay with at the agency, spend some time that we're going to go through and look at these technology standards? Because we did tell the agency, this is where, kind of with the EQS, this is something we care about. And so when we created the EQS document, we said, this is something we care about. We've gone through, we've been reviewing all those different areas and asking then for standards to be created and adopted by the state. Because that's one of our roles as state board, is to adopt standards for the state. And so we've been asking for updates for all of these. Now it's the turn for technology. A couple of months ago, we initiated this for, for social studies, to, to look at social studies standards, and again, to look at inputs in, in creating this. So, um, and point taken, Stacy. So why don't we stay to this presentation and whether or not that we have questions about, uh, if we want the state board to initiate, um, sort of review and to allow the agency to take public input around this topic. Um, and I do think your suggestion is a good one, that if people have things that they would like reviewed, to, to put that into that.
I mean, as a parent of a rising middle schooler who's going to be handed a device on September 1st, which I desperately do not want her to have, like I have all sorts of questions about the professional development and how does it work? And, and so I, I think it's, especially because the technology is changing faster than we can possibly have this discussion. I think nimble standards are so important. And I'd love to hear more about how that goes, but I'm not sure that this is right in the middle of this presentation is the right time for me to weigh in about all my fears about my 11-year-old with her own tablet.
Bill, and Jermaine here?
Actually, what I have to come in on follows Stacy quite well.
Thank you.
This doesn't tell me a great deal about what the content of the standards are. And I would like to have, or for us to have exactly what the 2009 standards were and what needs to be fixed about them or what needs to be updated about it. I'm content with your steps and process in terms of what you haven't been able to present yet. Um, but that would be fine, but I'd like to see the content of the standards and what we need to change. And then I'd like to push very hard in terms of what you just mentioned about privacy is sort of in an aside. We just released a new report on privacy and technology, and it's scary. It's real scary in terms of people stealing data, misusing data. We build the great data system in the sky and lord knows how it is being used, what security safeguards have we got, these kinds of things. And when we get to the end of the road, I'd like to make sure that we have a strong section on that. All of that said, um, I'd make a motion to do that.
Okay, um, would you-
Do you want to?
Did you have anything else that you wanted to finish up before?
Well, I-
I know, I think all of us have gone through and read.
I might actually be a little confused now as to what I'm, where in the process I am. Uh, so do you want to hear something about, uh, the difference between the two before you take this vote or do this?
The study, the motion that's on the agenda is to begin the initiation of the study.
Right.
I'm content with doing that. But in your study, I'd like to see old standards, why they're inadequate.
Okay, okay. You're not asking for that here?
No.
Okay, I see.
You're asking him to come back.
Yes.
Come back with an evaluation.
Yes, okay.
Do we have a second to Bill's then?
Just a second.
Second remark. Um, and then, but before we take, is there anything else? I know we kind of jumped in the middle of your first.
Um, no, I, I already said something about that. Uh, that gives kind of a timeline for the piece there, which you can all see there. Um, and, um, I'd, I'd like to also, I'd like to talk about the new teacher standards when we come back in, um, when I come back in September. So that'll be something that'll be, will have been updated by then. Um, that may or may not have implications for, um, the things that we already have in licensure standards and things like that for teachers, but, um, you know, I think it's something for you to be aware of as well. So, um, I don't know. That's all I had.
Discussion, and we'll go Peter and then Rainbow?
Anything from DC going to impact or, uh, this?
I don't-
From, from, coming from Washington?
You mean the federal budget?
Yes, in terms of, or, or, or criteria or whatever in terms of-
Privacy standards.
Anything?
No, in, in fact, um, well, strange bedfellows, but, um, the Office for Education Technology, um, out of the US Department of Education, was run by a name, a guy, a guy named Richard Collada for a number of years, three years about. Um, he just actually moved over to be the, uh, Executive Director of ISTI, the International Society for Technology and Education. So, um, I think there's, but there was a working relationship there before. I think that these standards were well-regarded from the US Department of Education before. So, um, you know, I, it's a, it's an interesting world, the way, the way those go. So anyways.
Okay, Rainbow?
Um, a question about, uh, computer science in curriculum? Is that any involved, is that involved in the standards at all?
Um, not directly, no. I mean, there's the piece in here about the computational thinker, um, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't call out computer science, but it does allude to it as being something that's part of that.
Yeah, because Vermont's schools and computer science.
Right, right. So, um, yeah, so, so I can't say, you know, there's nothing direct within that. So.
Okay, thank you.
Rebecca? And I just think, I mean, you notice, and I think you mentioned this, these were updated in 2009. It's 2017. We will be updating these again. And I think that when you think of programming and what we're now doing and considering sort of baseline use of technology to think, you know, in quantitatively, it is evolving so quickly. I think you could assume whatever you approve today will be outdated in five to six years anyway. So we'll be back. Yeah, I mean, this is an area where we are really seeing tremendous innovation and growth.
Yeah, it's, it's very interesting just in the way that these change from, as, as, as Mr. Mathis is referring, as these change from the 2007 group to the, to the new ones. Um, yes, I mean, there's, it expands in leaps and bounds as to how it grabs into other pieces. So, um, I, I suspect, and just thinking about, just in New England states, the computer science piece that you're talking about, um, that's, again, coming up very, very strong. And the coding piece, the programming, all that interest that students have around those pieces. So I think we'll see even a stronger strand in that in the next round of these as well. So.
I think we're running to catch up with the workforce at this point.
Yeah. John?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, Peter, I'm impressed by the depth of your knowledge and I'm just, I'm sure that you're a great asset to the state and to the agency. Then the thrust of my questions is to pose for us that if we're going to keep on doing something, which is what this is, how do we know that what we've been doing makes a difference in the lives of children? And, um, I think you've answered that question as well as you can, and I, which is to say, well, it's difficult to demonstrate. But I think your anecdotal observation that principals, for example, can use this as, uh, to support their leadership. I can hear conversations where somebody might say, well, the state wants us to do this, and that is the reason to do it. Um, I guess my question though goes to, the agency has scarce personnel. We're often hearing, we don't have enough of the talented people we want doing all the things we need to do. And so the question gets for me always to be, is this the best use of the talent we have in the agency at this time? Is it among the highest priorities we have? Um, and, and that, that if we don't ask those questions, then I'm not quite clear what sort of oversight we're providing to the agency at all. Uh, so those, that's the nature of the, the kind of questions I'm posing. This is obviously a good thing to do. Is it, um, an imperative thing to do? Or are there other things that would make even better use of your talents and expertise?
And I, and I do think that's part of the secretary's prerogative by bringing it to us, is asking to move forward. Um, because we no longer are overseeing the agency in a way that, because we used to direct what they did and where they spent their resources.
Just to be really clear, this is actually a statutory obligation. We have to have standards in the areas that we've indicated and identified as priorities. And you have to make, you, the board has authority to approve or not approve the, the standards. So we actually have to do this. This is, I would say, part of our core work. And Peter is one individual, but I think you've been incredibly effective at being involved and, and really making sure Vermont Voice was in those CETA conversations and reflected in the development of the standards. And I also think that you've done a lot of coordinating work around helping school districts access resources, including some of the E-Rate resources necessary to support the standards. We don't actually develop the curriculum. So in terms of our touch, we set goals and we coordinate the field. But the actual work of developing the curriculum and responding is done locally. It's not done at the agency. So, but this is actually part of our core authority or responsibility.
I mean, there's two ways to look at technology. One is the tool for other classes and the one is technology as a topic itself.
Right.
What curriculum are we talking about? Are we talking about rolling it into social studies? So you're now doing video presentations? Are we talking about like what?
That's where it is more the local.
It's, it's both. I mean, that's really local. And it could be computer science, but it could also be some of the technology applications that are pushing science. If you go into a science classroom right now, it does not look like your high school science course. And a part of that is the threading and the identification of the potential tools and what, what we expect students-
So technology is woven into the other, where there's specific references to the science curriculum and the social studies curriculum and the math curriculum that includes technology?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm confused if, if, if you are obligated, if the agency is obligated by statute to adopt standards.
The board is.
The board is.
Board is.
And we support, we are obligated in statute to support the board in that process.
And, and so you're, uh, why is it that the agency needs to ask our permission to do this?
Because this body has the authority to make the decisions about statute. I can't unilaterally say, go ahead, Peter, I like those standards.
Yeah.
I think this gets to our earlier conversation that we had earlier in the meeting around, um, what you referenced as turf wars. This, I think this is that clarity piece. This is the way statute is, is, has been presented. So I, the way we were set up before, when we, when we asked, the state board would ask the secretary or ask the-
Or direct the secretary.
Direct the secretary, wasn't the secretary, but the commissioner.
Commissioner.
Right. The commissioner to go ahead and do this. But now that, it's, it's different now. So now they, they will, by statute, they have to have the standards. They'll come to us and ask us to give, to give them permission to do it, and then we approve it.
And then when we finally approve it, and we've been tending to go for not just standards created by Vermont, um, which is very labor-intensive, is by going to more national standards and looking at different organizations. And the advantage of doing that also with professional development is if an organization is there and they offer professional development, they usually bring in people from around the country, um, which then, especially for State of Vermont, instead of trying to create our own set of technology standards and then doing all the professional development, we have that organization that we pair with. So.
I have a question.
About what? You'd like to call the question?
Yes.
Okay, so the question, um, so Bill had recommended-
Point of order.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know it's been the custom around here to have people interrupt and say, call the question. Robert's rules does not provide for that.
Well, I would move the question.
You, you moved the previous question. That requires a two-thirds vote.
It's vote. It's non-debatable when I've moved the question.
Okay, so-
I'm, I'm raising a point of order.
And so we'll take a, if you would like to, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of taking the vote, please say aye.
No, you have to raise hands. It has to be a two-thirds, so you have to measure.
All right, so to measure, so all those in favor of taking the vote, please raise your hand. So we have one, two, three, four, five. And those opposed, please, uh, raise your hands, no?
I'm gonna vote, no, I always vote no on these.
Okay.
I love the debate, sorry.
Okay. And, um, so seeing that the two-thirds have it, so then we'll call the question. Um, so all those in favor, Bill's moved the question that the State Board of Education approved the request of the, or sorry, look in the next one. That the State Board of Education asked the Agency of Education to review, invite public input on the recommended student and teacher standards for education technology. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those please say, opposed say no.
No.
And the ayes have it. Um, so I hope this didn't confuse you more than, or if it helped direct you where you want to go. Um, but it sounds like we want some sort of clarity where we've been and, and the changes that are, are moving forward. And, um, and maybe if there isn't even some anecdotal evidence about maybe differences that that's made.
Sure.
Just a second. I, I would love an update at some point in the future on the state of technology, like, like how many students, is there, is there a gap between wealthy districts and poorer districts? Is there a gap between wealthy students and poorer students?
So the tech divide.
Yeah, tech divide. Just like what's the current state of affairs in Vermont and-
And I think that will, um, hold, I'll write that down, but if you would, for strategic plan, because we talk about the achievement gap. So that might be a piece that, um, when we set priorities for next year.
Mark's comment about connectivity and that hopefully all the schools are connected now. You know, that was obviously the first hurdle that we had to jump over.
Peter has a lot of information. I think we could share on that. And you can do it now, or you can come back.
Yes, I definitely have.
I'd say let's, yeah.
Come back and do it at a board meeting. I think it'd be really powerful.
Yes, I'd be glad to do that. I have lots of information about that.
And Peter, maybe we could go back to Mr. Carroll's comments too, because I think we have some information that might speak, and it would be helpful to continue that discussion as well. So we could come back and do that at the meeting.
Yep.
Is it Jermaine or?
Rainbow.
No?
Can, can, like, do we have time for like one more quick comment?
No, let's, let, yeah, let's, let's move on. So if we called the question, yeah, so let's move on. Um, so thank you, and I guess we'll see you in September.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, and then we also, before we get to Rainbow's presentation, um, we do have item L, um, and-
Are you gonna speak to this, Rebecca, because your name was on here?
Yeah, so I think, and do we have a change? I think that all we need to do here, as you know, some of these districts go through, and my joke has always been when people ask me, are you gonna object to my name? And I say, as long as you can remember it, and we have to give you the oath of affirmation, the oath of affirmation of office, I'm fine with the name. But, but the reality is some of them went through, and then as they began to form as a committee, they often decide they actually want to change the name and pick something that's not as clunky as the such-and-such Unified Union blah, 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 school district, which is very long and is very institutional. And so many of them have come forward with requests to change their names, often picking language that's evocative of where they sit. Slate Valley, Quarry Valley, you know, you know, picking things that are more lyrical and reflect some of their Vermont characteristics. So really what this is, they can't do that without your support. And what this is, is just asking you, please, to endorse their request to change their name to something that they think really captures or speaks to some of the, some aspect of their communities. So that's the request that we're asking you to endorse today. It doesn't have any substantive impact on their operations. It just allows them to refer to themselves officially by a different name.
New letterhead.
The what?
New letterhead.
New letterhead. Well, they have to have it anyway, so they'd like your decision before they have to do it.
Before it was proposed.
I, I move that, I move that we approve the secretary's recommendation as presented on item L, dated June 19th, 17.
Second in by Peter. Any discussion? So seeing none, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those please, please say no. The ayes have it. So, um, we'll let-
We'll tell them.
We'll tell them that they can have their names or something. And so Rainbow, if you, uh, would like to get your presentation ready?
Can I just make a comment quickly?
Yeah.
I think this discussion highlights the uncertainty about what our role actually is as state board. And education policy is huge. And we, I think, underappreciate our role in that, in that regard.
And so Molly, I mean, she's gonna be going over that with us tomorrow. So I think that'll be a good discussion for us to have. All right, so now Rainbow, um, just walked across graduation. Now is ready to present.
Let's see, how does this work out? Um. Okay, I guess I can't have my notes. That's fine. Um. Okay, um, I'll just wait for Stacy to come back from the bathroom. I need a stretch, I'm sorry.
Maybe you want to tell people just a little bit about the process you went through?
Yeah, um, so I believe at the last meeting, when I was, um, when we were at Winuski, I just briefly, um, explained that I did a, um, independent research project about personalized learning and kind of the state of Act 77 in Chittenden County. Um, and so I did this, you guys know about Winuski, blah, 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 through the Winuski Eye Lab, um, which I briefly explained on the tour last month that it's really an opportunity to earn credit for whatever topic of study you'd like to do. And so I'm earning an English credit for this project. Um, and really my preconditions to picking this topic was that Act 77, I feel like is very underrated right now in terms of state attention, and that we kind of need to put more emphasis and focus on, um, what the status of Act 77 is. Kind of precondition and postcondition, made that realization. Um, and the pros for this, I focused on Winuski because I wanted to see how personalized learning impacts my own school. Um, Winuski's been a leader in implementation for personalized learning, and we've been really working towards, um, implementing personalized learning because of the demographics of our school and how, for us, important it is. Um, we have huge student voice outlets, amazing programs, incredible student-faculty relationships. Um, and we're improving our, um, college acceptance and attendance and retention rates in the future, um, and moving towards, because of Act 77, more proficiency and skill-based graduation requirements. Um, but a lot of problems that we have with Act 77 is that, um, there are a lot of inequities with it, and there's, there might be even a chance that there might be too much personalized learning in our own school in comparison to other schools. And we want to see if there's a balance between content and personalization and focusing on whether or not that's a controversial topic of having content in high schools, um, in comparison to skill-based, uh, graduation requirements. And for our school, in my personal opinion, there's not enough college prep, although we have incredible career, um, and work-based prep. Um, there's not enough communication between families and communities about what's going on in the schools, and personalized learning plans are very weak. Um, so my inquiry question was, what are the benefits of implementing personalized learning in Vermont high schools? And what are the best learning practices that could be implemented in Winuski? And my goals were basically, um, communication, improving my own communication between other schools, um, having successful site visits and developing strong research methods. And I visited the following schools, Montpelier, Colchester, South Burlington, Burlington, and Vermont Common School, which is an independent school located in South Burlington. Um, and on the right, you see the dates. I've visited them, and, um, I connected with different individuals from each school, Krista being one of them for South Burlington High School. Krista being one of them for South Burlington High School.
How could somebody visit the Vermont Common School?
Vermont Common School, I guess for that one, with my community connection, I connected with a teacher, he wanted, because the scheduling was a little iffy, I only visited for like very short periods of time in comparison to other schools where I got to visit for like three, four hours. And so I visited, my first school was Montpelier High School, in which I connected with Matt McLean, who is, I believe, the chair of the community-based learning program at Montpelier. And what this program is, is that they have a lot of internship-focused programs at their school, and it's an optional program that you can participate in. I believe out of their three hundred fifty students, fifty or sixty of them, or seventy of them, I think seventy, have participated in community-based learning, and annually, it's around sixty a year. And for these students, there are huge career and life changes because they had this opportunity to take this on. However, it is not required, and students have told me that it's, every student should have this opportunity and at least try it once, and then you can have a strong traditional and personalized balance. Otherwise, in their school, as for secondary opportunities outside of personalized learning that's integrated in classrooms, it's a really traditional school. Another cool thing about Montpelier is that they have a greenhouse in which their science classes really take advantage of by seeing how their science classes can develop hydroponic systems or solar-based systems for their greenhouses and learn science through more actual, like physical, hands-on learning through their greenhouse, so that was cool. Colchester High School, they have a lot of different systems as well, they have TIPS class, which is a life-skill-based class that teaches students future career skills such as developing a resume, learning how to have a proper interview, what you have to do to prepare for that, paying for taxes, learning how to do that, and also get an internship with help from the Chamber of Commerce. Someone from the Chamber of Commerce actually works with Colchester High School to help them find internships, so students have got to shadow doctors, they've got to shadow lawyers, and that's similar with Montpelier High School. They have extended learning, which is similar to my Eye Lab class, this is a new structure. They have senior seminar, which is their graduation requirement for seniors, by taking on any topic of study out in the community and getting ten hours of experience in that, and then displaying their research and learn findings at the end of the year. And they find that there's, they have really supportive administration when it comes to helping them, but students have found that because they have very, very slow implementation of Col-, of personalized learning in Colchester, they find that it's become very irrelevant to them. And if you asked any student, this is, I'm quoting them, if you asked any student if they knew what Act Seventy Seven was, nobody would know what the heck you're talking about. And it's come to the point in schools in general where personalized learning plans are actually joked about because they're so irrelevant, that's just a comment.
Because they're so, I'm sorry?
They've become so irrelevant, personalized learning plans, and it's actually kind of controversial whether or not like students think it's required to have a personalized learning plan, such as Colchester High School, in which not every student has a personalized learning plan, but more students who are on IEPs or need full support systems or have had previous struggles before with developing like school connections, whereas I guess what you'd call regular students who know what they were doing, they would not be required to take a, or have a personalized learning plan, which I thought was really interesting, and coming from the students, they have commented that they might not even need a personalized learning plan, so I thought that was really interesting.
Okay, but were those upper-class students, or were those freshmen?
These are seniors.
Seniors, so, and they are under a different source set of rules, so it's the freshmen that are the ones that-
Right.
My daughter has listed composting on her PLP-
Oh, that's cool.
The last two years, no, she's never composted-
Oh, really?
In her life. I don't wanna see composting again for the social, I forget what it's called, but that's kinda the thing that, you know, that's the one place where I think they're, I think, I forget what the category is, um, social, community service.
Oh, I see.
I just wanted to clarify, because sometimes there's different experience too between the different ages that kids are in school right now.
Oh, right, and to clarify, I spoke with a panel of students, teachers, and the principal when I went to Colchester. This panel of students being, um, like one or two sophomores, like three juniors, and five seniors. Freshmen, I was not able to get the chance to talk to because of scheduling, they were in their classes. Okay, uh, South Burlington High School, I connected with Krista on this, and unfortunately, we didn't get the time to have like a talk to a panel of students. I got to have my days, I spent my time talking to teachers and one-on-one about their experiences and their opinions on, and what's been going on, and that was really interesting for me 'cause each site visit's a little different, and I actually really enjoyed talking to the teachers about this. Each teacher has told me that there are many different implementations of personalized learning by department, such as social studies, science, English, and teachers have told me that you have to have a different implementation instead of having set standards for every single department to rely on, and I thought that was really interesting. Freshmen are starting to be exposed to personalized learning, which includes, in their humanities classes, for example, the opportunity to, instead of taking quizzes and tests, one teacher in particular, who actually does not encourage the use of tests to measure content and learning, to actually encourage students to write a comic book about it, or to create some creative products to show their learning, or they could just write a paper on it, and giving that opportunity to students to do. And that's implemented in her classrooms. They have a unique new math department where, instead of having the traditional Algebra One, Two, so-on system, they combined all of it together and created a Math One, Two, Three, Four, and then Calculus, AP, Stats, et cetera system. And then on the side, where say this pace does not work right for you, or you wanna test above on what you think you can do, you can take on this independent study, study opportunity where you can learn the content in the time that you want to do, and you could test out of it, say, over the summer, you want to test out of Math One or Math Two, you can take on that study over the summer, and then test out of it at the beginning of the school year, or during the school year, you could test at a, you can work at a slower pace or a faster pace for students who want to either accelerate in math or take their time in math because they struggle with math. And so I thought that was really interesting because not every student obviously learns at the same pace, and that helps adjust to every student's own personal development, and ensuring that students can have their personalized school structure that, the way they want. And they have project-based and skill-based learning in their schools. At Burlington High School, they're known for their BHS Register, which is the, one of the oldest Vermont high school newspaper, and actually recently awarded one of the best in New England, and they actually have a class for the Register in which you earn English credit for being able to create and develop the Burlington High School newspaper, which I thought was interesting, and students find that this experience has been really rewarding for them because they get to experience not only a career and what it's like to be a journalist, but also be able to study English in terms of this style. They have a Student Innovation Seminar, which is a class specifically focused on change in society, and this year's focus is on education. And when I got to visit, I got to visit one of their classes, and they were recently talking about personalized learning in a sense that graduation requirements and what could school actually look like in a different system if graduation requirements are different, so I got to talk to students about that. And they find, they find that the opportunities that you have in classes, such as Student Innovation Seminar, are really interesting, but they're not exposed to much of it early on, so that by the time you discover in senior year or junior year and you really like it, time's out, and you don't have much time to experience it. They have, they're implementing proficiencies, and some classes are project-based in their school structures, but a lot of students have told me that most of their classes are traditional, and they don't have many fun electives that are, that are dedicated to personalized learning, such as Student Innovation Seminar, and obviously they have the Burlington Tech Center, so that's obviously a different opportunity for them to take on as well.
Rainbow, I'm getting the sense that, that student satisfaction varies from school to school.
It does, yeah.
These students seem happy with it, the previous ones seem disenchanted, maybe a little bit.
Yeah, and so that comes to my, well, my analysis is after the next school.
Okay, okay, okay.
Just one quick question with Burlington.
Yeah.
Did you discuss with them their end-of-year program at all?
The YES program?
Yes.
Every, so the Burlington High School has a YES program, which the final two weeks of school are, teachers get to select any kind of topic that they wanna teach, such as, this could be jewelry making, this could be hiking for two weeks, this could be traveling to China, or Ireland, or so on, and this is for the last two weeks of school, and students have found that the YES program is absolutely amazing. They really look forward to it at the end of the year, especially since it's right after finals. They have to take finals two weeks earlier than everybody else, but they find it rewarding 'cause they get to learn about things outside of the traditional school structures, such as traveling. And especially those that have traveled, they find that those experiences have been, been the most life-changing for them, and like discovered like a passion for, say, international relations, or so on, and-
Is that for all students or just seniors?
All students in Burlington High School. For the travel ones, you obviously have to fundraise throughout the year to do that, but there are other classes such as hiking that have been very fun and improving wellness for students, or there has been-
Project Runway is my favorite, where they, they actually, a teacher got all the sewing machines and they create their-
Oh, really?
Create outfits, and then they do a runway, and, yeah, so if they want to-
For the travel ones, do they, do they study leading up to that? Like the local culture and maybe a little bit of the language, or not really, or is it just a total submersion?
Um, based, based off of what I know, it's, they don't study yet, they just get to travel and experience it when they get there. Stacy, do you have some?
Well, can I ask you something?
Yeah.
Well, I've heard about the year-end studies, that it allows both teachers and students to be out of their box. So it allows a science student to maybe do something with an English teacher because the English teacher is running the hiking trip, or the jewelry-making class is not taught by the art teacher, it's taught by the, I don't know, taught by the music teacher, so I think it, it seems from what I've heard that it creates interesting connections between teachers and students who otherwise maybe wouldn't see each other as, as having something in common. So that's, that's what I've heard.
Are there other, Madam Secretary, are there other school districts that do this similar program, or is this really unique?
No, I think, I think there's a tremendous diversity across the state, I think many schools have different kinds of things. I mean, I think, you know, I think Rutland's been developing, they have a seminar program as well. They're different in different places, I know Cabot does something at the end of the year. I think theirs is the last three weeks, I think if you just go around the state, they have a mandate for personalized learning, they're phasing it in starting in seventh grade, everywhere you go, it looks a little bit different, but the concept is supposed to be making sure every child has access to some kind of career exposure, work-based learning, project-based exposure in the community.
I'd say like Rutland and Burlington have the most developed year-end studies program. I don't know much outside of the state when it comes to this similar program, 'cause I only focused on Chittenden County.
Here's the concept to me.
Yeah, okay. So, the YES program, I forgot to add that, 'cause it's just been so ubiquitous. Vermont Common School, private school, not much exposure to this, but I actually found that the Vermont Common School experience has been really surprising and eye-opening. They have, out of all the schools I've visited, including my own, the most personalized learning implementation. They have lots of student voice, they have a similar program to the YES program, where three times a year, they get to travel for a full week, and this could be going to Shelburne Farms to learn about life on the farm and working with animals, or this could be traveling to the Grand Canyon to learn about science and geology, going to the White River rafting, and traveling to China, India, all that stuff. And then they have a research and service class, which is a class dedicated to working in the community to look at a problem and attempt to solve it, that's a semester class. They have personalized language, arts, and social studies classes, where most of the topics are selected by the students, they're topics of study. Say the teacher gives a, a very broad prompt, like focus on World War Two, and then students get to pick whatever project within World War Two they wanna study. And that is the same thing in every other class in language, uh, language arts, and even languages themselves, such as Chinese, they have Chinese and Spanish in Vermont Commons, and the pace that they want to work at for learning the languages and culture is up to the students, and the teacher works around with them. They have senior internships where every week, seniors are allowed to leave school to work, to go on an internship. They have a senior project where their final six weeks of school are dedicated to finding a community-based, a community partner and working with them for thirty hours a week, and developing a senior project based off of whatever they wanna study. For example, one student got to travel to, I believe, Colorado, and I don't know what he studied, but he traveled to Colorado to work on his senior project, other students traveled to, I believe, South America to travel, and some students worked locally on their senior projects, but I know that it's a thirty hours per week for five weeks in their final senior, in the final few weeks of senior year, and they get to present their information at the end of the year. So I feel like Vermont Commons had a lot of incredible, different personalized learning opportunities, but once again, if we think about demographics, Vermont Common Schools, very expensive and high per-pupil spending rate, which is about, their tuition is about twenty-one thousand dollars.
How did, how did you pick the schools just out of curiosity, did you try to get a blend of them, or?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't really care what schools I picked, like, I didn't go for, oh, I need a private school, I need a Denver school, I need a traditional school, I just went with what's closest to me because traveling.
Yeah, of course, so you don't wanna spend the whole time in the car.
Yeah, and I had to miss school for this, so, I have a lot of absences this year, a lot. And Vermont Common School was recommended to me by a teacher because she actually worked at Vermont Con- Common School before coming to Winuski, and so that's really why I came, went to Vermont Commons, 'cause I had not thought of that previously. And I found out it was my most eye-opening experience, 'cause of what happens in independent schools, like, I don't know much what, about them. Overall, overall analysis, to get to your point earlier, it's really different everywhere you go because of personalized learning and Act Seventy Seven's very broad specifications. School demographics, I've realized, are a huge part of what makes Act Seventy Seven successful, frustrating, or like even much of a failure in their own schools. For example, small schools are more likely to work quicker with Act Seventy Seven, such as Winuski, Vermont Common School, and Montpelier, because they're much smaller, and it's easier to work around the changes. At the same time, the demographics of having primarily minority versus primarily white, schools are also a huge impact on this, for example, South Burlington versus Winuski's implementation. South Burlington communities are very curious and always question the notion of personalized learning because traditional learning has always been what's worked for them, and switching the entire system up to personalized learning has been something that's very worrisome to these parents, because if the traditional learning has worked perfectly fine, why are you changing it up? And so that's been interesting, and that's why traditional schools like Colchester and South Burlington are having troubles implementing Act Seventy Seven, and find that they run into more obstacles than we do.
Is that particularly with traditional college tracking?
Yes, yes, and a lot of communities are worried that, how colleges will look at this, especially proficiency-based transcripts, especially after the class of twenty-twenty. And parents are just really concerned about this in these communities, and in other schools, in comparison, Winuski, having the communication is very important, but because we're not used to being traditional in the first place, it's kind of like we didn't really care much about that factor, whereas other schools have. And that's been the reason why Colchester and South Burlington have been taking, what one teacher says, cautious steps towards Act Seventy Seven. And like I said, it's very difficult for those schools to work on it. Personalized learning plans, have been the least successful aspect of Act Seventy Seven based off of my observations, because in every single school I've visited, they have been the weakest link of Act Seventy Seven. In my own school, we've barely touched upon personalized learning, and other schools, they are developing personalized learning plans for each student, but there has been no actually implemented model based off of what I've seen in any of the schools I've visited. Student voice is a huge piece of Act Seventy Seven, communities need to be educated more because a lot of parents are thinking that Vermont is the first one to implement personalized learning or proficiency-based graduation requirements, which is not the case at all, because we are, I think, the sixth, twelfth? The twelfth state to implement like personalized learning and proficiencies?
Oh, no, I think there's a number that have been doing it.
Right.
I think we were, we have some of the most aggressive, comprehensive statutes.
Sorry, what, I couldn't hear your answer?
We have some of the most comprehensive statutory language, but I think others are experimenting with proficiency-based learning, including Hampshire.
And Maine has had a lot of success with proficiency-based transcripts, and, but our parents just don't know that. Our parents also don't know about Act Seventy Seven is not to limit or inhibit students from their learning opportunities, but actually increase it, and so we're not trying to ruin what- And so we're not trying to ruin what has happened before, but we're trying to improve it by allowing students to have more opportunities that are outside of what has been the cookie cutter model or the game that you play. And even students need to be educated more on this because frankly, even in my own school, Act 77, nobody has a clue about until I explained it in front of the whole school. In a nutshell, Act 77 is meant to help you learn more outside of the box opportunities. And then models should be shared between schools because schools have no clue what other schools are doing. Winewski, our math department, has no clue what South Burlington Math Department is doing. And I think it'd be really cool if their schools work together. Or say, Colchester and Montpelier work together on things. It's just, models and connections have been very frail, I say, because everyone's kind of lost and want to see what they can do, but they haven't been looking at what's already been happening, which is why I guess I'm doing this project. So this is my proposal for my own school, is to reorganize our math and science departments. Our math lab, as I explained, is completely reorganized so that all the student, all math levels are in one classroom. And I think that we should reorganize it so that we offer the same thing that South Burlington High School offers for their math program. For science, our classes are semester-based classes in which students pick what they want to study. So for example, we have a class that's Color, Light, and Vision, which is the physics of vision and optics. Or we have Geology of Vermont, which is Geology of Vermont. And we have really cool science programs, but students, we have a large amount of students who want to go into science and health-based careers, and they find that they're missing the content that they need to know and to prep, to prepare for college. And our science classes are divided, they're semester classes in half, where half of the class is dedicated to learning content and basic knowledge. And then the second half is a project where you get to study a topic that is relevant to the class. Say, for the Color, Light, and Vision, I took that class. Half of the class, I learned about the physics of the eye and the biology of anything related to that. And then the second class, I chose to study about how the science of glasses and how that affects you. That, it's really half and half. A lot of students really like this structure and a lot of students don't like this structure. I think that we should still have the project-based learning implemented, but perhaps not as much time focused on it because students really want to know the content in order to prepare for college. Whereas in departments such as English, we can do whatever we want with English classes where students can pick that. We're having a Shakespearean class and a Russian literature class next year, whereas last year, we had like a food writing class and a dystopian writing class. And we can do whatever we want. And our English and like, our students' writing is perfectly fine. And so I think that's a very huge success with writing in Act 77, but math and science and more content-based classes are struggling. We need more college prep in our schools and really encourage and advertise what Act 77 has to offer, such as early college, dual enrollment, online classes, because students have no clue that you can do that. And you just really have to emphasize that if this does not work for you, you do know you can take college classes, they're free, free college classes. And you can take early college, earn up to 40 college credits in a year of your senior year. And that's huge, but students just don't know about it.
Did you find that the other schools were taking advantage of that?
No, a lot of students just went with the traditional route because they're worried or scared of that it's not the college route that everyone's used to. So similarly, you really have to focus on educating students on what you can do and really learn to take risks, honestly, because a lot of students are just all focused on this whole, I have to go to college, I have to go to college, so I have to take AP classes, I have to take AP classes, honors classes, and perhaps some college classes, but they don't know about personalized learning and how it could be the same level of rigor as an AP class. And that's a fear in a lot of the traditional schools as well. So I guess reflections and thoughts, this project has been really interesting and thinking on the whole state level and what we should do is really provide support in terms of educating what we can do and what the opportunities that can be opened with Act 77. So far, schools are really trying their best. Their, the teachers and administrators are trying their best to see what they could do, but students are kind of like in this back and forth notion of whether or not they should give it a shot or focus on what they think is perfect for colleges to look at. And I mean, I've had success with it because I'm going to Brown. I've had the personalized learning experience the entire time, but we need to advertise that students can do fine on this route. And we need to help these schools find balance in terms of what the state is asking them to do in terms of requirements. As for proficiencies, I think that's also pretty weak and a lot of communities are afraid that their freshmen will not be ready because most schools do not have their full set of proficiencies available for their students to graduate on. For exa, even my own school, we have half of the proficiencies explained and implemented and our freshmen still have no clue what's going on. And so that's another worry that our freshmen have in terms of Act 77. And a lot of people are thinking that we need to work on this and really have our schools let us know what's going on, but at the same time, schools have no clue what to do for these proficiencies because it's so, so broad that they don't know what to do. Stacy?
Want to say, I think you just, I mean, you just hit the nail right on the head. I think you're the key. You're, it's, I think having students who have, because it's still, it's relatively new. We don't have 20 years of history of students doing, having these opportunities. So I think having someone like you say, yeah, I did this, took advantage of these opportunities, I did things a little bit differently. I, I got into an exceptional college, here's my success. And then two years from now, four years from now, you come back to Winewski. Because as you know, students are much more pyramid motivated. Otherwise, it's a lot of like adult, you gotta eat your vegetables, you know, kind of thing. Where it's like, yeah, yeah, I don't want to do that or I don't like that. But to hear from you, oh, this is what I did. I think that's what will, students will be able to convince students to take advantage of these opportunities in a way that adults won't be able to. So I hope that you will continue to kind of keep in touch with Winewski or all of us here and, and make sure that students hear from you that success too.
Right, and that's why this proposal over the summer, I'll be working with my school on it. And I have a research paper, actually, that's 34 pages long about this entire project, that I'll be sharing with the people I've worked with. I'll be sharing it with all of you if you're interested in taking a look at it. Because I have the more quantitative and even more specific on like what I did in my site visits and what I learned in my conversations and quotes. Yeah?
So this is kind of exciting for me, kind of bookending, because I introduced 77 to the legislature.
Oh, yeah.
And, and one of the primary reasons why it was introduced is because there's a number of kids that, it was particularly facilitated by New England Secondary School Consortium, but a number of kids in high schools were just disengaged, didn't have any idea what they were going to do after high school. And this was a way to, to engage those kids, to get them, but obviously for the college track kids, that, that may not fit their, their profile. But I, I think this is great. I mean, you're showing us the bumps, the, the warts, you know, what's good and what's, and it's still very much a work in progress because, but it's, I, I think it's a good piece of legislation and it was well-received in the legislature.
Right.
And I, I think we're making headway on this and it's great.
I will say, you know, the parent, the parents are really, this is something that parents aren't used to.
Yeah, exactly.
I went to college, it was the four-point scale and high school was the hundred, you know, zero to 100.
Yeah.
For, for parents, there's been a lot of like nervousness about this. My kids are not into the proficiency, they're, we're moving to that next year and they are not into that at all. There's a little bit of convincing and I think it's, it's tough. A lot of people are pretty ignorant.
Right.
But a lot of colleges have already adapted to this.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not taking the SATs or whatever, and there's a whole, whole new world out there.
I've heard nervousness from parents about that exact same thing.
Yeah.
That how are, how are colleges going to figure out who to admit and who not to admit?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really matter, I think, the biggest thing we really need to work on with Act 77 is educating everyone, every single stakeholder about it. Because, I mean, first of all, students have no clue what's going on and they're the ones actually victim to this act. Parents have no clue what's going on and they don't want, and they like, in my, in my experience, parents are thinking of moving their students to other districts because they don't want to deal with this. And I think that's just kind of funny because everyone has to do it. Like, do you want to send your kid to maybe an independent school to avoid this? And then there are the inequities in that. And so like I've had students, my own friends, whose parents want them to move out of Winewski because they think that Winewski won't prepare them for college because we have so many different things going on. And it's just really interesting to hear. And for me, I'm kind of a spiteful person to laugh at because, I mean, we have it pretty good here when it comes to implementation. So you're just making it worse for yourself if you're going to more traditional schools who are currently struggling right now. And so everyone's kind of slowly sinking into kind of this abyss that people don't want to enter. And it's just a matter of letting people know that it works in a sense, but you have to let people know because I'm sure this presentation probably helped you a little be more informed of what's going on in schools. And this is just Chittingen County. Like Cabot is doing amazing things as well. And then there's, I heard Brattleboro is changing things up and they're doing fine. And Hazen, Dylan School is doing great things as well. It's just a matter of letting those communities know what's going on and then you can slowly implement it and see the successes. But as a state, we really need to work on helping each other out because we're all kind of stuck in this box, thinking that, oh, we have to do this for us and ourselves instead of looking at what other people are doing successfully and seeing what we can do to improve our own. And I guess that's why I have this proposal, because I'll be that person to do the heavy work, I guess, the lazy, the work that lazy people don't want to do. But I don't know, I've had a lot of fun doing this. And one thing that I was thinking for the student representatives role on the State Board of Education, as we move more towards student voice, is having the student rep be the person that's in charge of letting people know or letting students know in different areas. Because say like Dylan lives in southern Vermont, he can help with that. I live in northern Vermont, northwestern Vermont, Chittingen County, which is highly populated. I can work on that. It's just a matter of giving us the time to do that and structuring that with other schools and communicating. Because obviously, if you hear from adult people, attention spans are not high. And I'm sure you've all realized that by now, but if kids listen to kids about it, it'd be pretty interesting. But that's really been my entire project and it's been fun. And even though it sounds really pessimistic, there are a lot of incredible things coming out of personalized learning. Like Montpelier, because of the people, like one student who graduated and, from this community-based learning program, took a gap year and got a very high-paying job and got to travel around the world because of her community-based learning structure in which she got to work with Shumlin's office. And for other people, one girl did community-based learning. She wanted to go and become a lawyer and she shadowed a lawyer and she found out that that might not be the route for her. And to figure that out as a high school student is amazing because in college, I'm sure people change their majors all the time, but by then, it might be too late. Or a lot of people believe that in the future, when, after they graduate and get a degree and get a job, they find out that it's not really good for them, they don't really like it. And so giving high school students a chance to learn that is really cool as well. And then students get to explore.
It's about time to break for lunch. Do you have final comments before?
I mean, I've just been commenting on the good and the bad. Do you guys have questions too? Any final questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
It'd be interesting for you to talk at Brown and see what they say about, I mean, I think part of it is, you know, for people who are really attainment-oriented, it's hard to figure out.
Yeah.
I think we're done with the meeting, so we need to adjourn.
Oh, yes.
So I move for adjournment if we're all done?
Okay, yeah, we are done.